I thought she was gonna be here to begin the meeting.
Yes. Good evening and thank you for coming. We'll be starting in just a few minutes. I do have an announcement before we get started. The initial public comment is only 30 minutes, and I have more than like 37 people to speak. So what will happen is the first two, which is on a different subject altogether, Tyree Parren and Deborah McNulty will have two minutes of the individuals. The people from Language Academy and Limburg-Sweizer, it's about 17 of you. You will only get 15 minutes to talk about magnet transportation. So we will call you down. It's 15 minutes. The first ones that speak are the first ones to speak. We have another group of people here from Logan. It's 13 of you, I think it is. And so you two will have about a minute each to speak. So that around our first 30 minutes of the meeting. And Ms. Duncan Morris is here now, so away we... Thank you, John. We provide opportunities for members of the public to address the board on items not listed on today's agenda. One is at this point, the beginning of the meeting, and again at the end of our business agenda. Mrs. Ward, in addition to speakers on the blue sheet, are there additional requests for non-agenda items? I think you have a few. We may not get to them, but please hang on to them. Thank you. We'll start out with Tyree Parsons and Deborah McNulty. Could you please come forward? Okay, well, maybe they're not here. One more time. If you're out in the foyer, Tyree Parren and Deborah McNulty. Okay, then I'm gonna start with the long list. These are all people that are speaking on behalf of magnet transportation. When I call your names, please come up front. Remember, you're only gonna have 15 minutes total. If someone in front of you says what you want to say, then just skip that part and go to your few, your last few comments. So that everybody get a couple seconds to speak. So we have Summer Hellwell, DeCarla Davis, Celine Holman, Connor Boyd, Desiree Wilson, Sandra McKnight, Kane Cruz Walker, Savannah Demone, Makina Sanders, Michelle Brown, Terrell Hall, Chanelle Ellis, Geronimo Solis, Greg Barbich, Rich Scott. So let me call those names again. Summer Hellwell, DeCarla Davis, Celine Holman, Connor Boyd, Desiree Wilson, Sarah McKnight, Kane Cruz Walker, Savannah Demone, Makina Sanders, Michelle Brown, Terrell Hall, Chanelle Ellis, Geronimo Solis, Greg Barbich, and Rich Scott. There look like 15 people are there. Hold up for just a second. Let me pull up the Spreckles Magnet, Andrea Arondo, Melissa Solanen, Penelope Nagel, and Melissa Porter. Okay, you may... Ms. Ward, Ms. Ward, 15 minutes, you may start. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Summer Hellwell, and I teach middle school at the Language Academy. Our school is one of six dedicated magnets in the district in danger of losing students if magnet transportation is cut next year. If this were to happen, our school would be in danger of closing, and our district would lose one of the most innovative and interesting programs we offer, one that produces bilingual and culturally aware students that are prepared to live in an increasingly global community. Our students love our school, and they are here on their spring break on their own time to tell you so. These middle school students both represent our Spanish and French programs and are both bus riders and non-bus-riding students. They represent our school community. Please do not harm that community by cutting our transportation. Thank you.
Hello. My name is DeCarla Davis. I attend the Language Academy. I've been attending the Language Academy for eight years of my life. I am in the seventh grade Spanish immersion program. We don't want to lose a great part of our future. This school gives each and every one of us a great opportunity. If we don't get to go to this school next year, then we lose something that's gonna make us who we want to be in the future. That also includes the kids that want to go to this school to become bilingual. If you take away our buses, then our brothers and sisters will not have a chance to experience what we have today. Everyone deserves a chance in life to succeed. As children, and the ones that are waiting to come to this school next year will miss out on the opportunity that we have in this lifetime. Please, I want this opportunity in life and my bus.
Hi, my name is Celine Holman, and I'm a seventh grader at the Language Academy. Learning Spanish is important to me because I'll be able to get a lot further in life with a second language. I feel disappointed that we won't have buses next year because that is how I get to school. I ride the bus, and if buses are taken away, my Spanish learning will be taken away. In closing, please restore transportation to magnet schools for next year. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Connor Boyd. I'm a seventh grader at the Language Academy. I really like learning a different language because it makes me different than most kids my age, and it will help me out further in life if I decide to take a trip or work in a different country. I heard we might not have buses next year, and that makes me upset because a lot of my friends take the bus, and most of them will not be able to come to this school next year if there aren't any buses. If those people weren't in my, weren't able to come to the school anymore, I'd be losing some of the most important people in my life right now. Even though I don't ride the bus, so many other kids do, that if they stop coming to the Language Academy, I'm afraid our school might have to close down. That would really upset me because I've gone there since kindergarten, and next year I'm supposed to graduate and go to Europe with all my classmates. And if the school closes, I lose that chance. Please bring our buses back for next year. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Desiree Wilson, and I'm a seventh grader in the Spanish immersion program at the Language Academy Magnet School. My school, unlike many other schools, gives a very unique and valuable opportunity to become bilingual. The Language Academy gives everyone who attends an important skill for future jobs. I feel that if you take our buses away, it will benefit few and hurt most. I don't ride the bus, but if they are taken away, there's a possibility that more than half our school students will not be able to attend next year. If that happens, our school has a great possibility of shutting down. That could cause younger kids like my sister to fall behind in the normal school. Please don't take away our buses. The fate of our younger bilingual schools rests on this decision.
Hi, my name is Sarah McKnight, and I'm a seventh grader at Language Academy. Language Academy is the only public school in California that teaches French. I happen to take French, and I really like learning it. Our teacher took a survey, and out of 27 kids, only three didn't ride the bus. If buses are gone next year, our school will lose lots of students and may even shut down. Then I and my classmates wouldn't be able to study French or Spanish anymore. So please restore magnet busing for the San Diego School District. Thank you.
My name is Karen, and I'm a seventh grade student at the Language Academy. I like my school because learning Spanish has been very challenging and rewarding for me academically and personally. School is very important to me because I've been a 4.0 student since entering the middle school last year. For me, learning Spanish is very important. My mother is from Costa Rica, and I have a large family who there only speaks Spanish. One of my concerns about losing busing is that students will no longer have the opportunity to participate in the magnet schools, programs, and choose the education that matches their interests. Another concern is that students enroll, student enrollment at my school could be cut in half because 57% of the students that attend the Language Academy are bused. Losing busing will have a ripple effect. It will result in the loss of teachers, staff, and will drastically hurt the quality of education that we receive. I don't understand why the district would choose to destroy the same magnet school programs that they have worked so hard to create. On your website, I read that a district-wide four-day furlough will result in a $10.3 million savings. If the cost of magnet program transportation is really $10.5 million, although it has been estimated to be much less, then we could save busing by increasing the district-wide furlough day by an additional four days. Thank you very much for your time. I hope your decision in this matter will be based on what is best for the students, and we'll leave our magnet school transportation intact. Thank you.
My name is Sylvia Demone, and I'm a seventh grader at Language Academy. I love learning Spanish here at Language Academy because here we have a very diverse program. There are people here that speak Span, that speak English and are learning Spanish or French, and there are also people that speak Spanish or French that are learning English. I feel very saddened that we won't have our buses next year because if we lose them, my parents may not be able to get me to school. I ride the bus, and if buses are taken away, then I'll have to go to an entirely new school, and I will not be able to be in the only Spanish-French immersion program in California. I love this school, and to not be able to go would mean me losing touch with all of my friends. Please bring our buses back for next year.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Katie Sanders. I have four children at the Language Academy from third through eighth grade. I just put my eighth grader on a plane to France this morning. While traveling in Europe when I was younger, I learned how important a second language was. My husband and I do not speak a second language, and are so grateful that we can give this opportunity to our children to become international. When I enrolled my oldest daughter in the immersion language school, our family made a commitment to the nine-year program. At the start, I asked the district about the possibility of the school losing its magnet and its busing like two of our neighborhood schools in Loma Portal, Point Loma. The district made a verbal and moral commitment to me to provide busing to school and assured me that it would not and could not be discontinued because of the uniqueness of the program and the difficulty of transitioning from an immersion school to a traditional English language school. And I'm very concerned about having to transition them back into an English-speaking school. The bus to and from school is important to us because we both work, and we would not be able to transport our children to and from three schools in three different areas of San Diego at three different start-and-stop pickup times. All of our children are important, everyone in San Diego. All of our programs are important. Please don't pit us against each other for the same money. The Bellgole Park 5th Day program is important, the buses are important, our children are important. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Brown, and I'm a sixth grade student at Limburg-Sweizer Elementary. I'm glad that I'm able to attend an integrated school. Thank you for making that possible by voting years ago to have busing to magnet schools. If I went to my neighborhood school, there aren't that many people of other cultures or races there. And by going to a writing, multimedia, publishing magnet school, I have been able to videotape for kids' news and have the opportunity to have a book published. If I weren't able to attend this school, I wouldn't have, never had the experience to be in kids' news and meet all of my friends from different ethnic groups like one of my best friends, Olivia. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Terrell Hall, and I am a sixth grade student from Limburg-Sweizer. I'm glad to have met many other people from different ethnic groups. This has meant so much to me because I have learned so much by getting to know people who believe in different religions. Now just think, if you were forced to go to school with faces of all the same color, you probably wouldn't like it. Why would you do it to us? I'm sure you can find something else to cut that's not so important to us kids. My mom is out of town on business, but she would like you to hear her thoughts. Your neighborhood school may not be necessarily the best for your children, and we all want the best for our children. If busing is cut to magnet schools, I and I'm sure many other parents will seriously consider pulling our children out of the district schools and placing them in nearby charter schools. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Chanelle Ellis, and I'm a sixth grade student at Limburg-Sweizer Elementary. At my neighborhood school, differently-able students were stared at just because they're different. I'm glad to be able to go to a special magnet school thanks to the magnet buses with children in wheelchairs and using crutches or oxygen tanks. We have friends like them in our classrooms, and we get to play with them at recess. We are all the same as I. Now I have some questions about the fairness of cutting magnet busing. How is it fair that the magnet schools won't get busing next year, but the VEEP schools will get it, and the special ed students will get it? And kids may have a brother or sister who is special ed or VEEP, and they could still ride the bus, but the magnet bus rider couldn't. How is that fair? Could you explain that to us, please? Thank you.
My name is Greg Babich, and I'm a special education teacher from Limburg-Sweizer Elementary School. First of all, just to remind everybody that Brown versus Board of Education said that separate was not equal, and that as much as we don't want to acknowledge it, there are still many parts of San Diego, these schools, these areas in the district that are still very homogeneous because of ethically and socio-economically. I believe that the magnet programs help maintain a multi-ethnic flow across our district to help minimize this lack of diversity. In addition, our magnet schools have various focuses, and students who have particular gifts in those areas have the opportunity to attend these schools and to explore, nurture, and develop those skills. Lastly, as we brought up after our last board meeting, it looks like perhaps the district isn't gonna save near as much money as has previously been stated by closing the magnet busing. At our school, we have over 100 students with special needs who are bused in. Almost 100% of our magnet students ride those buses. These buses are still gonna run next year with students with special needs. The only thing that's gonna happen is if we close these magnet busing, these buses will be half-empty. No money will be saved, and the beautiful program, as we've stated before, will just be destroyed. There's gotta be a better solution or alternative than this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Ward, you're finished. I'm gonna call up the Logan Elementary parents now. Charlotte Esquivel, Lourdes Barron, Maria Flores, Lucia Camarillo, Veronica Rosales, Sally Griffith, Stacy Wyatt, Lupe Asunla, Larry Ruthman. Well, I wanted you to go there 15 minutes with those. You're gonna have to wait now. I wanted you up with those, that was over there because it's all on magnet busing. I gave them 15 minutes. So you're gonna have to wait now. Yeah. Well, you're gonna have to wait now. Thank you. Yeah. I understand, but it was all under one heading of magnet busing. Are the Logan parents there? All there? Okay, you have about a minute apiece, please?
Begin?
Yes.
Charlotte Escobar, I'm the English honor support teacher at Logan.
Excuse me, hold on for a second. If you're leaving in the audience, please leave quietly. We want to hear everyone. Thank you very much. Please.
The Logan community is distressed that Logan may lose its sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. I want to tell you why Logan is the best academic environment for these students. Number one, the students are already part of the community and have a sense of identity and belonging, which is a recognized factor in student achievement. They're connected to the teachers at this school. The sixth and seventh grade teachers are veterans who have looped up with their students since fifth grade. Number two, little time during the school day is wasted on discipline problems. Logan is orderly and safe. Number three, because of that, students are focused on learning, and over the past four years, our scores have improved. If these students leave Logan, where will they go? Busing to an out-of-neighborhood school may not be an option next year. And as far as Logan parents are concerned, the neighborhood school is not an acceptable alternative. I think, I can assume that you know what I'm talking about. Please ask yourself, as a parent, if you had to choose between Logan and the alternative, which school would you allow your own child to attend? Ask yourself in the shoes of the Logan parents and students and reflect on this. If you wouldn't allow your own child to attend a particular school, why would you make that same school the only choice for other kids? I ask that when you vote on this decision, you think about what you would expect to be provided for your own personal child, and allow the Logan parents and children to have access to the same thing. Thank you.
My name is Lourdes Barron. I'm a mother-volunteer lady. I've been a volunteer in the school of Logan. I've always worked with the maestros, and it's unfair that you decided to go first. First, you decide the choices, and then you present to the parents to offer the application of choice, knowing that the dates of application have been set, or giving us the option of memorial. What is your purpose? Please, we have to be taken into account because you make the decisions. Don't leave us behind. Respect the rights of parents. We know that we are a force in our children's education, and we shall await your answer very soon. Do not give us the information that we requested now at the end of the school year.
She has already stated her name, Lourdes Barron, and I will speak in first person singular. I have been a volunteer parent for many years. I was a president of the PTA. At Logan, we have always worked as a team with the teachers, and it is unfair for me because you take decisions, and then you go to the parents to offer choice applications, knowing that these applications are already due, so that the only option that we have is memorial. What is your purpose? Please, we have to be taken into account because you make the decisions. Don't leave us behind. Respect the rights of parents. We know that we are a force in our children's education, and we shall await your answer very soon. Do not give us the information that we requested now at the end of the school year.
Good afternoon. My name is Diana Salas. I sent you a video by email expressing our feelings about what was happening, and we haven't received a response yet. As I said in the video, I'm a mother of two girls in the school of Logan. One is in kindergarten, and the other is in seventh grade. What I want to say is nothing new. It's one of the things that we promised two years ago, to leave the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at Logan. The only thing we feel is that we are being obliged to send our children to memorial because we don't have other options. But who is sure that we are sending our children to memorial? At least, I would do anything to send my daughter from seventh grade to another school that doesn't have memorial, in case that we don't have the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at Logan. But remember, you are also making cuts to the school. Thank you.
Again, her name is Diana Salas. A few days ago, we sent you a video attached to an email where we expressed our feelings regarding the current situation at Logan. Up till now, we have not received any answer, and I say, and as I say in the video, I am the parent of two students at Logan. One is in kindergarten, and the other one is in the seventh grade. What I demand is nothing new. It is merely one of the things that we were promised two years ago, to leave the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at Logan. The only thing that we know is that you want us to send our children to memorial because there is no other option. Who will assure you that we will be sending our children to memorial? As far as I'm concerned, I will do everything to send my daughter to a different school for her seventh grade. That is not memorial. If you resign up to leave the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at Logan, that's what I shall do. You must remember that you are also cutting the transportation. What other options do you offer? Thank you.
Good afternoon to all the presenters. My name is Lucia Jaramillo. I'm a mother of a family in the community of Logan. I'm here to say to all the representatives of the board of education that we don't want to cut the grades from sixth to eighth in the school of Logan. We want you to fulfill the promise made to us two years ago. We were so happy because our children were going to be in the same school from kindergarten to eighth. And now you want to take everything away from us. The children are doing extremely well in school. You can compare with other schools that began the same program from kindergarten to eighth. I'm very thankful that we have very good teachers, and I hope that my children can remain in the same school. We do not want our children to go to memorial. If there is no other option, then we will not send our children to school, and you know that if our children do not go to school, then you will not earn your money. Therefore, our children's education is of the utmost importance, as well as for you. Thank you.
Her name is Lucia Jaramillo, and again in first person singular, I'm a parent of the Logan School community. I'm here to express my opinion and to tell the Board of Education that we do not want the elimination of our sixth to eighth grades at Logan. We want you to fulfill the promise that was made to us two years ago. We were so happy because our children were going to be in the same school from kindergarten to eighth, and now you want to take everything away from us. The children are doing extremely well in school. You can compare with other schools that began the same program from kindergarten to eighth. I'm very thankful that we have very good teachers, and I hope that my children can remain in the same school. We do not want our children to go to memorial. If there is no other option, then we will not send our children to school, and you know that if our children do not go to school, then you will not earn your money. Therefore, our children's education is of the utmost importance, as well as for you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Veronica Rosales, and I'm a mother of a family in the school of Logan and Memorial Prep. I'm here for one of the reasons that we are being offered Memorial Prep as another option to not leave kindergarten to eighth in Logan. I've had a very bad experience in the school of Memorial Prep, given that my son has special classes, he has an ESP, and it took more than two months for me to get a consultation, and until now, I haven't gotten one. Because we are in this. We have a very bad experience in this school, and we want you to stay in Logan from kindergarten to eighth.
Her name is Veronica Rosales, and I will add up to what she has already told. I'm a parent at Logan Elementary, and I have serious, a serious concern because you are offering to send our children to memorial. And my personal experience at Logan is not, at Memorial is not too good. My son has an ESP, and we could not have a conference with the teacher until I was granted one two months ago. So that is my real negative concern about Memorial.
My name is Alma Lopez. I'm a parent of a family in the school of Logan Elementary. We are here to give my reasons for staying in Logan. My reasons are that I want my children to stay in an environment that is safe and good academically. Logan has offered my children a discipline and rules that I want my children to stay in Logan. Thank you.
Okay, the last. The next topic, we'll have two speakers on PSA, Lorena Gonzalez and Jess Durfee. You both have two minutes and then Maureen O'Connor will be the last speaker and you will have two minutes as well. Are those speakers here? I see Jess Durfee. Yes, come forward, please. The next speaker is Maureen Gonzalez, Jess Durfee, and Maureen O'Connor and that will round out the first thirty minutes of public speaking. I asked them to come up here and so we're gonna have to wait for the next magnet transportation. Okay, Jess Durfee?
Thank you. My name is Jess Durfee. I am the chair of the San Diego County Democratic Party and each of you should have a copy of a resolution recently passed by the San Diego County Democratic Party Central Committee. The resolution basically is in strong support of project labor agreements and it talks in general terms, but it also gets very specific when it talks about the importance of creating skilled local workforces, economic prosperity, and a safe workplace for local workers. It also addresses the need for providing an economic base of the communities where taxpayer-funded projects are undertaken, thereby ensuring that government is not lowering the standard of living, and it provides for accountability for construction contractors in paying livable wages, providing health care and retirement benefits, and hiring local workers. President Barack Obama on February 6th signed an executive order calling on federal agencies to develop project labor agreements for facilities, highway, or other construction projects of significant value, stating that they would establish clear workplace rights, safety procedures on large construction projects, and taxpayer productions. We ask that you do the same here in San Diego with Proposition S, school construction dollars. Many in our community need these dollars to not only improve our school facilities, but at the same time to provide badly needed support to our local economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen O'Connor?
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Maureen O'Connor from San Diego Project Heartbeat, which is a program that was initiated in our county to help save lives throughout the communities of San Diego. Over the last two years, we have worked hard to obtain funding to help place automatic external defibrillators throughout San Diego Unified School District. I'm pleased to announce to the board, just as an update, that to this date, through one hundred percent funding, through donations, through very strong active community members, we have been able to place at least one AED in every high school, one AED in every middle school, and several of our elementary schools, and we're not stopping. It's been some hard economic times for us and we wish to continue our efforts until we are complete. We're working together with Jennifer Gorman, who is with us here this evening, our primary liaison and Dr. Terrace, to continue this effort and we want to thank you, the board, and everybody in San Diego Unified for your continued support. I have with me Laura Lee Olenek, who is our team member from Project Heartbeat, who'd like to read a letter from Fire Chief Tracy Jarman to thank one of our donors, the Lost Patronus organization, that donated twenty thousand dollars to outfit thirteen of our middle schools and make that complete this last, this last year. So this, here's Laura Lee.
Thank you, Laura Lee Olenek with Project Heartbeat. As Maureen mentioned, one hundred percent of the funds to put AEDs in all these schools, which are literally affecting the safety of tens of thousands of students. And Fire Chief, Chief Tracy Jarman has sent a letter to the Lost Patronus organization, which on behalf of San Diego Fire Rescue Department and Project Heartbeat, we would like to thank Lost Patronus for their generous donation of twenty thousand dollars to purchase automatic external defibrillators for San Diego City schools. As a result of this donation, thirteen of these lifesaving devices were purchased for middle schools, which helped us to complete outfitting middle schools. In these tough economic times, we are ever so grateful for the generosity of community organizations such as Lost Patronus that promote the health and safety for all San Diegans. Thank you for thinking of the San Diego Fire Rescue Department, Project Heartbeat, and your charitable giving. Sincerely, Tracy Jarman, Fire Chief. And as Maureen mentioned, we are looking forward to continuing to partner with these schools in the district to make sure that every school in your educational facility has an AED. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now recall this meeting to order, but we now have the colors presented by the Army JRL T C program from Kearney High School. Will you now present the colors? Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. I'm Sheila Jackson, president of the board. I would like to welcome all present today and call the April fourteenth, two thousand nine regular meeting to order with all board members present. We hope the discussions and decisions you observed today will give you a better understanding and appreciation of the important part you play in setting the course of education in the San Diego Unified School District. Agendas for today's meeting are available at both entryways, the auditorium, at the information table located near the press table, and the internet at www.sandy.net. In addition to the broadcast of our meeting on ITV and the live webcast, we are using Board Docs, the web-based program to enhance governance, reduce our paperwork that we generate, and provide for better communications with the public. The board requests that those individual pages and cell phones, please turn them off or put them on silent mode while you're in the auditorium, and that during the meeting, please enter and leave the auditorium by using the door at the back or the door to my left in front of the press table. And hold your chairs because they bounce and make a lot of noise. The board records your comments and writings and your public testimony. Public testimony request forms are located on the tables to my right inside the front and back entrances of the auditorium. The board asks that speakers focus their comments on issues and not on individuals. Acceptance, acceptance of public requests, acceptance of public requests at the close of each agenda item is called and our discussion begins. Board meetings, board members are very interested in your comments. The superintendent and his staff will be responding to the issues we hear today. If you wish to address the board today, your name is not on the blue sheet and you have not already submitted a request or public comment, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward. Speaker on agenda items will be called to speak on the, speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Agenda item testimony is limited to a maximum of twenty minutes per consent or end or action item. A line for a maximum of ten minutes for opposing viewpoint and a maximum of three minutes per speaker. No referral of time is allowed. Non-agenda items were heard at five PM and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. Testimony is limited to a maximum of fifteen minutes per item and three minutes per speaker. Referral time is allowed. The board operates under the Robert Rules of Order, which confers upon the governing body and participation in proceedings in a civil and courteous manner. At this time, will the student aides representative introduce themselves? Tell us a little bit about yourself and what's going on at your schools, both academically and socially.
Hello. My name is Maya Santiago. I'm the ASB president at Miramesa High School and I'm the secretary for the ASB Presidential Council. At my school, recently, there was a very successful every fifteen minutes program, top scholar night. Start testing is next week. My ASB is currently preparing for ASB elections on Friday and we are preparing for Secretary Day and Earth Day next week. We had a really great second pep rally for the first time, like, in ten years at Miramesa High School. Today was the college fair for the underclassmen and there's a farmers market, which is new and that's going to be happening in about two weeks.
Good afternoon, my name is Jose Jorgez, ASB president at Kearney High School and also president of the council of ASB presidents. At my school, we just had our pep rally, our third pep rally this year. The Friday, we left out for spring break. Coming back from spring break, we had on Monday, council, council member Donna Frye donated forty-three trees to our campus through the community improvement program. So we're really thankful for that because this forty-three tree is going to beautify our campus and which is gonna have an impact to look better. We're really happy with that. Right now, our ASB is working on the palm and is also working on elections for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item up is item BO3, student presentation for Madison High School students, Dr. Evans.
Yes, today we have Madison High School with us and just like to say a couple of things about Madison High School. I recently went there for an arts performance. They had the honor theater, they had their orchestra, they had their choir. This year, Madison High School was also a championship in football and CIF. They have a good ROTC program. They're welcoming to a lot of students, they bring a lot of students from outside the neighborhood, including a lot of special education students. And in this last year, a hundred students more who live in the neighborhood actually enrolled in the school because of what they're doing there under Principal Carol Whaley. But what I want to talk to you about today was I had the opportunity a few weeks ago to meet a group of young men with Vice Principal Richard Nash, which is the, they're called the Men of Quality, part of the Ten to Succeed program, which is part of the Male Leadership Development Initiative. And this, this is what, this is really happening in our public schools and we really, really need to pay attention to. People who are really making an effort to work with our kids. And Mr. Nash was a very good example of this. On a Saturday morning, with other people, other, from his staff who were there with him, working with a particular group of kids from his school on leadership training, and I'll turn it over to them right now.
If we could just start the video. Thank you for your attention and the students will speak to you just as the video concludes. In an effort of time, they can, they can speak first if you would like.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good evening. My name is Michael Sweet. I am a ninth grader at Madison High School and I'm a member of the Men of Quality. And Men of Quality follow two rules. The long-term goal is to become leaders in our community and our short-term goal is to become leaders in our schools.
Good evening, my name is Javier Gutierrez. I am a man, a man of quality. In the beginning of the school year, my grades were bad. With the help of Mr. Nash and George, my grades started going up. Now, one of my future goals is to help our students next year in the way Mr. Nash and George helped me.
Good evening, my name is Samuel Verden and I am a Man of Quality. At the beginning of my freshman year, I was constantly late. I didn't really attend class because I didn't think I had anything else better to do with my time. But now that I joined the Men of Quality, it has given me insight, Mr. Nash did not give me that word, why it's important to get to class on time and to be prepared. One of my plans for next, for next school year, to start out great with good grades. Thank you, I mean, thank you for your time.
So I'll just speak for a moment, since we lost the video. These gentlemen are working very hard on identifying the, the skills that are necessary to be successful in today's high school and beyond. And we hope that through the support that we've already received, both from Mr. Evans and Ms. Becky Philpott, as well as our superintendent, that they will continue to grow. We thank you for your support.
Okay, I think the video is on the way here.
I just want to say that it was just a few days ago that I called up Mr. I just want to say that it was just a few days ago that I called up Mr. Nash, probably four school days ago that I called him and asked if his group could come make a presentation. And somehow in that amount of time, they put all this together. So that's pretty impressive for this new group.
Thank you again. The next item up is item CO1. This is report from closed session, informational report, administrative assignments. Superintendent Guevara?
Thank you, President Jackson. Tonight, the board approved the appointment of Paul Nunez from Teacher Clark Middle School to Vice Principal Clark Middle School. Effective date to be determined. Thank you.
Any other comments or information reports you have?
Yes, ma'am. On our superintendent's report, just wanted to let you know our site work books have gone out to principals. I'm sure some of you've heard the same comments and feedback that I have. Our principals have been pleased with the HR and the allocation process and that's always good news and hopefully that can stick. I also would like to let you know that the district has selected the 2009-10 District Teachers of the Year runner-ups and they were recently announced at their school sites and we plan to hold a day of recognition for teacher celebration on May the 5th. Our Teachers of the Year this year at the elementary level was Bill Freeman from Porter Elementary School. And Michael Crawford from Monroe Clark Middle School at the middle level. And Felipe Ponse from San Diego High School of International Studies at the senior high level. Our runner-ups were Martin Teachworth from La Jolla High School, Kelly Koviac from the Prey School at UCSD and Giovanni Boas Goodwill Harriet Truman Village School. So I wanted to give you a quick update as far as that's concerned. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Guevara. The next item is DO1, adopt the agenda. Have motion please.
So moved.
Removed. Second. Please vote.
What is it? Yes?
Thank you. The next item is E. And items EO1, EO2, EO3 are all items for action. So the first one, item EO1, is approval of minutes from February 24th, March 10th. Special meetings, March 3rd, March 7th, March 10th, and March 24th.
So moved.
So moved, okay. Okay, so moved and second. Thank you. Item EO2, appointment of representatives to the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education. So moved. And a second. Second. Okay. Thank you. Item EO3, authorized to excuse board member absence for special board meeting.
Any motion?
Where's my excuse?
Yes. All right. Thank you. All right, we move on to items in the F category now, informational reports. I'll start with Mr. DeBec.
Well, San Diego's produced some major leaders that have been noted, known nationally. We had George Walker Smith, who was a board member that became NSBA president, but probably an unknown to many of you is that Don Morrison was the SDA president at a time when I was a member and he became the NDA president, which is a large, the greatest leadership role you could take in teachers. There'll be a memorial service for him at 11 o'clock Unitarian Church on Saturday. So really a great guy who a lot of us owe a lot of, a lot too.
Ms. Guevara?
Yeah, just two things. First off, I'd like to thank everybody who came out to Burbank Elementary School a couple of weekends ago where we did a tree planting in honor of Cesar Chavez. We planted 137 trees and Principal Brihalva and her staff and of course, the students and parents at Burbank, you know, really welcomed us out and did a great job. And Councilman Weso along with the San Diego Urban Corps, Cesar Chavez Service Club and others really came together and made that happen. So I just want to thank everybody who participated in that. I also just want to take a minute and register my complete support for the parents and the community at Logan. You've been promised a K through eight, you need to have your K through eight and I'm going to back you up 100% for that.
Mr. DeBec?
Yes, on April 1st, which I thought was a particularly inauspicious date, I took a group of students and instructors up to Sacramento to testify in front of the Committee on Education for the Assembly, for the State Assembly, which was a very big deal. We visited over six Assembly members in their offices. We brought a sousaphone with us, which as you know, is that very large instrument in marching band parades and it was like having its own personality. But the students talked to Assembly members about an issue, Assembly Bill 351, which has, will be giving an exemption from PE for marching band, JOTC, let's see here, color guard, drill team, dance team, and California Cadet Corps. At any rate, it's, it was, we passed the Assembly Committee on Education and I have to tell you, it is really due to our students. Particularly, we brought them from Miramesa High School, Lincoln High School was represented, and Henry High School. And our kids are, I have to tell you, among the most articulate people I've ever met. There were, I think we managed to bring eight politicians that day and they convinced the Assembly members. So we're moving into the full Assembly, that'll be coming up in front of it. But I wanted to, this particular bill has had the support of Los Angeles Unified, Long Beach Unified, the PTA has signed on and so has the, let's see here, PTI, I've lost track, there are so many organizations, I also have a cold as you can hear, so maybe I'm not thinking as clearly. But anyway, a large number of organizations have been supporting it, but it was the advocacy from our students and it was tremendous experience for them. So I'd like to thank the board for their support on this initiative. It seems to be developing a lot of support throughout California. So I just wanted to report on that and again, thank you to our students, Miramesa, Henry, and Lincoln and Sarah was also represented in the, by an instructor, but really remarkable, just remarkable. Thank you.
Dr. Evans?
Okay, I want to report that I went to fundraisers recently at Miramesa and University City. These were both good examples of communities getting out and working hard and raising a lot of funds to supplement the programs in the public schools in their neighborhoods. And I'm really happy to see we have a lot of strong support in the communities. Another thing I just wanted to briefly mention is that there's a board. We have been, we had a workshop recently and we're working on developing a long-term vision for the school board and for our San Diego School District. Even in the middle of a crisis, we need to look ahead because we find ourselves constantly making a lot of the same mistakes and we have a lot of times, a lot of inadequate planning. And we really want to do all of this with very open community input from parents, teachers, and everyone else who is involved. And just, and I think this is one very important point that I want to make, I think we have a lot more work to do. We can certainly do a lot better in terms of our relationships with our teachers and with all of our employees and I myself am going to work, I'm dedicated to that. Thank you.
Okay, again, I would just like to thank all the board members that went to Washington, that went to Sacramento. Our board has been very active with the legislation for ensuring that San Diego gets its fair share of the funding, both the stimulus and stabilization funds that are due to our district. And I just thank you for all of your efforts on that behalf. The next item, item FO2, is a resolution that item has been pulled by staff, but we do have some speakers. And yes, we have speakers and board members and so since the speakers were not notified, if you still want to speak, you can speak, but that item has been pulled. Mr. DeBec?
Well, the number that's on there is only, it shows us as a number of people, but the number as far as in a budget item is around a $17 million item. So that should we not act on it, which is probable, since it was pulled and since the timeline is running out, we're going to need to find $17 million to make up for that. I just want to point that out.
Thank you, Mr. DeBec.
And maybe, maybe another follow-up would help, but I'll leave that to you to decide.
Any speakers on items FO2? Okay. If not...
I'd like to, actually, I can't go out, also again, expressing my concern. I said at the beginning of all of this that we were going to be, need an awful lot of fortitude and this particular item is a placeholder. It's not a definitive action. It's $17 million that we are now further into the hole, even deeper. And you know, we're, it's going to come out of, it's going to come out of programs that, like what we saw today with Madison, the extracurricular programs, it's going to come out of essential services here within the district. It's going to hurt our kids, is what it's going to hurt. The magnet school busing, we're $17 million more in the hole than we were before, so I guess the magnet school busing is also again, at risk, which I know is, the programs, sixth grade camp, all of these things. And we'll make all these decisions in the middle of summer. We'll make all of these decisions in the middle of summer when everybody's on break and the audience won't be full and it'll be quiet and people won't notice until September what we've done to education today. No, you'll forget, you won't be here. I think it's a shame we're not making a decision today.
Ms. Guevara?
Well, I think we have made a decision and that's to actually stick by our teachers. And I think it's misleading to label this an additional $17 million in the hole. There's nothing in our Plan A or Plan B that got submitted to the county that talks about laying off an additional 233 teachers. What we're simply doing is being consistent with the position that this board has taken from day one, which is, we're going to have to figure out other ways if we need to get to that point to balance our budget. We've done a good job of that so far. We're going to keep doing that. Let us remind everybody that the Plan A and Plan B that needed to, that we needed to submit to the county on March 10th could not include any projections of federal stimulus money.
Stabilization.
Well, yeah, especially the stabilization money, which by the way, has as a purpose to protect and create jobs. So by eliminating jobs today, we'd be working at counter-purpose to what the federal stimulus money is supposed to be. So we're not making an additional, we're not putting ourselves an additional $17 million in the hole. We're not pitting our teachers against the kids who ride the buses or any of the other programs. What we're doing is, once again, committing as an entire community that we're going to face this crisis together and we're going to face it unified. And so we have made a decision tonight and we're here to support our teachers.
So we're proceeding with Plan B? So we're, we're going to proceed with Plan B?
No, I think you need to actually study the plans that you in the end voted against, in Plan A and Plan B, because there's nothing in Plan A that talks about cutting 233.
I didn't say that, but that does leave us with only Plan A and Plan B to implement.
Okay, let me just comment.
No other options.
Well, let me comment on this, okay? This district, this board, has taken a stance that we need everyone during this time of economic crisis. We believe very deeply that in order to stimulate the economy, we must have people working. We believe very deeply that the most fundamental thing in our community is educating our children. And that's what this board is committed to protecting. You cannot educate children if you do not have teachers in the classroom. But that is not the end of it. This board is also committed to ask and issue every citizen in this city, as we said at my district address, that everyone needs to look at creative ways of making our school system successful. We cannot continue business as usual. It means that we all have to think differently. It means that yes, we're going to be, there's going to be some give and take. It doesn't mean that it's the end of busing. It doesn't mean that it's the end of many of our programs. It means we have to look at how we do our programs and look and see can we, how we can do them better, how we can be more efficient. And when we're more efficient, we find those funds. And so that is what this board is saying. And what this board is also saying is that we have a commitment, not only to our staff, but to the city of San Diego, to ensure that our city remains viable during this economic time. And that's what this is about. And I know that later in the agenda, we have an item, ask community support for us, the item on April 30th, that we do need everyone. We need all the board members, all our community people, to be supportive of where we're going in the future. We want to hold everybody accountable, not just this board, not just our staff, not just our teachers, but our state legislators as well, for ensuring that we have the funds that we need to support this district. So I know that this is, it's not a difficult decision for many board members, it's just a different way of thinking. And this board is saying, it's time for us to think differently. Not the same, differently. Dr. Evans, please.
Okay. I just want to say that what a budget does is it shows what our priorities are. And a lot, there's a lot of talk when we look at a budget, personnel are the highest cost and let's, let's attack at that. We have to look at what is our most valuable resource. We have a lot of special programs, we have a lot of special things. Our most valuable resource consists of the teachers and the support staff who are working with the teachers. Now, earlier in the year, approaching March 15th, this board took a stand that we were not going to issue layoff notices. When the district became very clear on that, we began to find more and more ways to find cuts in other areas. If we had not taken that stand, we would not have found many of the cuts that we did find. One of the things we know from past experience is that for the stability of the district, that laying off, giving layoff notices to a large number of teachers, whether or not they're recalled later, has a very, very detrimental effect on the district. One of the things that we learned not that long ago was, when we passed the deadline for laying off permanent teachers, was that of the probationary teachers, many of them were teachers who had special qualifications and they were hired because of that in math and science and other areas, where it wasn't even going to, we would end up hiring back a lot of them anyway. So we don't want to get in a situation again where we're laying people off and then turning around and needing them and hiring them back. One other thing that you may not be aware of is that recently, at the administrative level, on the level of administration, on the level of management, that we did issue pink slips, we did issue notices, that everybody in administration became on notice that their job is not guaranteed for the next year. This does not mean that they are necessarily going to lose their jobs. We have to very carefully assess what we're doing at the administrative level. What we've already seen, and this has already happened at the school level, is we've directed more funds to the school sites. And if you talk to the principals, they're breathing a lot easier than they have, and more easily than they have in years past, because they are being fully funded for the staff that they need to run their schools. So we're really directing things out from the center, into the schools, and into our most valuable resource. So that is the reason that we were taking this stand.
Yeah, I just, I just want to emphasize that this leaves us with fewer options and I'm glad that, you know, the teachers feel better about this in that sense, but I have to tell you, these are probationary teachers that we were talking about and management has been, everybody has been given a notification that their jobs are on the line. So I suppose administrators that they, you know, are expendable and people who've given many of them, you know, years and years of service and provide valuable resources, but I don't know how we're going to fill this budget gap. And I think that the public should take a very, very close look at Plan B, which I did not vote for because I felt that we had already taken irresponsible decisions. That, you know, it includes sixth grade clamp, Balboa Park, Old Town, the VAPA department, which is our visual and performing arts department. It will be gone. The ROTC program is on the block. The magnet school program and the busing, everything that we're talking about, where we have had people come down and testify for us, they need to take a very close look and I think that the papers should actually publish Plan B so that people know exactly what is at stake because it's, I'm glad that, it's good that we're celebrating now, that's great, but I think that we're looking very short-sighted. We're closing off options, we're closing doors, we're saying that, we don't want options, we have painted ourselves into a corner and said that, you know, we're, I don't, I'm very concerned about how we're even going to pay our bills. We'll find some extra money, but it's a $17 million gap. Closing that door as an option for us is, if we don't make the early retirement, that's going to be extremely painful. If we don't get the, if the five measures that are on the ballot in May... If we don't get the, if the five measures that are on the ballot in May do not pass, we're gonna be up a creek without a back paddle. The stimulus money is not intended to, you know, close the budget gaps. And even if we use that money to do that, that means in the years, you know, next year or the year after that, we're just going to be facing, you know, a bigger problem. We've got a whole series of steps, and I, it would be great if we have tax receipts that are coming in. We're paying our taxes tomorrow, our income taxes, we paid our property taxes last Friday. It'll be interesting to see what those tax receipts look like, 'cause the king will be in his counting house, counting all his money in May, to figure out how much money we've got. If we got enough money in the tax receipts from these two days, then maybe we'll be ahead of the game, but there's a good chance that we'll be behind. In fact, the tax receipts are not going to be as high as we hoped. So all of those instances, by taking this, or, excuse me, by not taking this action today, we are closing options. It didn't necessarily mean that people weren't definitively going to be laid off. We've pulled back an awful lot of people from last year, but it kept our options open. And so that means that teachers in the classroom are going to have fewer options. It probably means field trips will be curtailed, we won't have the money to spend on things that we value within our schools, you know, the supports that we give to teachers. The teachers don't work in a vacuum, there are things that they like to have. The supply cabinets, it'll be interesting to see what they're gonna look like next year, although I will say that the superintendent has done a phenomenal job, and it is to his credit, in reorganizing this district and making sure that the schools actually are more protected in many ways than they've been before. But let me tell you, we are making a very dangerous decision today. And I think it takes us to a very dangerous place. And, you know, I am very, very concerned about it. I don't like closing off my options. I like to know how I'm gonna pay my bills, and this is a very, very large-going concern. The state of California is not going to sit by and let us lose money. We lose money way too fast. We're like the Exxon Valdez, when we get hit, when we hit a rock, we spill oil so quickly. The state of California is not gonna take very long at all to step in and say, we've gotta stop the bleeding. So I'm very concerned. I think parents and teachers in this district should also be similarly very concerned about the management of this school district and exactly what's going to happen, because they should take a look at that, not only on Plan B, but also at what's on Plan A, because those are things very near and dear to our heart. And I think we're gonna lose them.
Item F. Three, Dr. Evans. Item F. Three is proposal to administration of the AP voluntary parent payments. Thank you.
Okay, on this one, we're actually gonna move to something that Mrs. Nakamura and I agree on. We do have a budget, we do, a budget shortfall. And I wanna start off with trying to find the first half-million dollars, because every half-million dollars counts. Now, here's the situation with advanced placement tests. I'll make a motion, and then I will go on to explain. And my motion is that we contact all parents who have children, students in the district who are taking AP tests this year, and let them know that the district is sending in en masse the cost for those tests, and we're asking all those who are capable of paying to reimburse the district for the costs of those tests. Now, just a little bit of background, up until this year, parents have, families have paid for the AP exams that students have taken. I'm not sure if the board took an action to change that, or if it was just changed by the district in some other way, but this year is the first year the district is paying, paying all of the costs. And this is rather ironic at a time when we're at extreme budget shortfall. Now, there are very good intentions behind this. We've tried to expand the AP program so that all students can participate, regardless of socioeconomic background and so forth. And so the idea was to make it no cost to anyone, so that everyone could participate. And this has already been set in motion for this year, but I'm simply proposing that we send a letter to the parents who are capable of paying, in other words, all the parents whose children are not receiving free or reduced lunch, and letting them know, this is the cost of the test that is, that the district is paying, and asking them to, rather than having to do as they done years past, to pay directly to the college board to reimburse the district for that amount. From a legal point of view, it is entirely voluntary, because we've already taken on this role for this year. But this, and the reason this has come about is this has been brought up to me by parents themselves. I've attended many community meetings where parents have said, for my other kids, I was paying eighty dollars for each of advanced placement tests, and we've been doing this for years, and now all of a sudden I don't need to, and yet I'm totally capable of doing it. When the tie, when the district is in a tight budget jam, I think that we should be contributing, is what many parents have said. I've gotten several emails from parents, talked to people at meetings. And so that is, my motion is that we make a concerted effort to contact the parents, both through letters to the school, through U.S. mail, letting them know about this program, and the fact that they can reimburse the district. And if they do, that this will restore over, there are ten thousand AP exams being taken, roughly, more than ten thousand, but of those, about six thousand are parents and families who are capable of paying. If we take that amount of money, it comes to over five-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars if everybody pays the amount for the test that they are taking. So that is my proposal, for them to realize that they can actually help the district meet a half-a-million-dollar budget shortfall.
Who can take the career?
I'll take it, you get a second. You get a second.
Oh, he's second. I said I would second it, so I'll second it.
Okay. To take a career?
Well, basically, the reason the district is paying for the AP exams here in San Diego Unified is, we are one of the only school districts I know of that requires a student to take the AP test in order to get a weighted grade. And I think we're overlooking that. Now, if you want to do away with asking parents to pay for this, do away with giving weighted grades for AP exams. That's the way to do it. But the law is pretty clear, and I don't, the law is pretty clear, that if you're going to require a weighted grade for an AP exam, then you cannot require parents to pay for the test. You can say, well, let's just ask them if they want to pay. Well, quite frankly, no one that I'm aware of has said anything to parents that want to write a check equal to the price of an AP exam and give it to their school, or give it back to the district, that they can't do that. But that's something that, you know, I guess you can ask parents if they wanna do. But again, I'm concerned, and still will tell you, I'm concerned about the stigma that arises when you require, when you even offer parents to be able to do this. If we send this letter to all parents taking AP courses, what are the parents and the kids gonna feel like that can't afford to do this? And that's the point I'm trying to make. We are trying to do things that other large urban districts don't do, in terms of increasing the rigor of our high schools by increasing the number of our poor children taking accelerated courses like advanced placement exams. So that's the end of it, in terms of all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Mr. Beck, please.
Okay, well, I'm willing to make a little bet. And I'll tell you that the cost of postage will exceed the amount you get back from the parents on a voluntary basis. And I bet you that the sending the letter has actually cost you more than you get. And, you know, you name the number, and I'll match it. But I don't, I just honestly do not believe that a letter that says, you know, I've heard so many things out there about the budget cuts, just give me a chance, and I'll cover the cost. Give me the chance, and I'll cover the cost. People say it. There's a difference between saying it and getting out the money and doing it. And I, you know, you may have heard some from some folks that said, well, you know, we oughta be able to pay for it. But when the time comes for them to write that check, you watch out. I bet you they don't. So, you know, I'm gonna leave this alone. If you wanna do it, fine. I'm not even gonna vote no. I'm just gonna say, if you pass it, I'll put money on it that you're not gonna get back the cost of the mailing. Four thousand times fifty what cents? It costs over half a dollar just to send one letter, that counts printing and envelope and postage. That's at the bargain prices. I've done it.
So I know. Dr. Evans?
Right. Well, first of all, I mean, in terms of what Superintendent Greer was saying, there is that issue of the fact that there is a weighted grade tied to it, and when you're tying the weighted grade to actually taking the test and not being able to require them to take it. I just do wanna point out that the other districts, which they do not require them to, they don't make that connection. But for example, in Poway, the parents are paying ninety-two dollars, in Carlsbad, the parents are paying eighty-six dollars, and LA Unified, the parents are paying eighty-six dollars. This is, legally, the parents cannot be required, and I'm not disputing that. I have, I guess, a little more faith in just having talked to parents, and parents of the San Diego district, that we will collect money off of this, and that the money will exceed the amount of the cost of the mailing. I'm not saying that because there's a potential five-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars that we're going to raise all of that. But if we raise a hundred-and-fifty thousand, if we raise a hundred, or if we raise fifty, or if we raise twenty-five, that is a chance for people to take a positive action, to be supportive of their district.
And the board members wanna speak on this item?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Okay. Well, on specific AP tests, I want to kind of voice my concern about the AP government course and how it's not weighted second semester anymore, because I'm in that class. And every year before me, the whole year has been weighted as, throughout the whole year. So second semester should be weighted instead of economics, 'cause it's an AP government class, not an AP.
You've seen me before, you leave to not work on that.
I will. And besides that, for the, for the no paying for the AP test this year, I've been taking AP classes since my freshman year, and it's phased like ten to twenty dollars every year I've taken the AP class. So last year, I paid like ninety to a hundred dollars for two AP tests. Well, actually, personally, I didn't. I have free and reduced lunch, so I only had to pay five dollars each, which I thought was smart. So for a resolution, I would suggest, like, lowering the prices for an AP test, like fifty dollars, and just keeping free and reduced lunch students like to five dollars instead of just eliminating paying at all, because if you bring back the money for this this year, people are just gonna be very, like, angry. I, like, thank you.
Okay? Yes, sir.
As a student at Kearney High School, we don't have any AP classes, which I believe is not something we wanna do. I feel that the students at my school are really mad because they don't have AP classes. They can go into class at Mesa College, but it's not the same thing. They only offer a first or fourth period. Many students don't have transportation. So I hope that next year, we have AP classes. I know I already told them that I would bring it up, so I wanted to keep my promise. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Any other board comment or discussion? If not, please vote.
I'm gonna pass.
Good. He's a team. Okay, it's a two-two vote. That means there's no action on that particular item. Okay. The next item is board discussion about a budget analysis process. Dr. Evans?
Okay, let's see about this one. What I have written up is something which I would wanna discuss openly in public with the board, not every board member, I'm not discussing with other board members except for one, as far as the content on this, but it's to give the public a sense of the board's approach to this budget situation over the next couple of months, since the initial decisions were definitely made under the gun on March fifteenth. So the first motion I will make, after reading this, will be to adopt this as a board statement. And then following that, I have one more specific motion to make about a detail on this. So I'll just go through and read this and make some comments as we're going along. As a school-
Can you make this a first reading? Because, I mean, and I can only speak for this board member, I don't have anything to look at here, and you're asking me to just prove it? Is there something here in our package that we're supposed to have?
It's on the board docs, it's on the ground.
Right.
Okay, I don't have anything.
Let me give you one here.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
That's a bit.
Okay. Yeah, I understand, you wanna just do it in the dark. Okay, as a school board, we had to approve severe budget cuts to meet our March fifteenth interim budget report deadline. We had to propose cuts to which we would normally be opposed. That's pretty obvious. Our final budget decisions will be made in June. Between now and then, we will be studying possible additional revenues, as well as other possible cuts to balance our budget. So from my point of view, there isn't just a Plan A and B, there's also Plans C, D, and E. There are five points here. First, before making decisions about budget cuts, we will be appealing to the state for our fair share of the federal stimulus dollars. We'll explore maximum flexibility in the funds we are given, and we will seek reimbursement through other types of programs. While this may mitigate some of the cuts, the cuts will still be severe. And the whole point here is making, before debating which areas to cut, we want to make sure that we are maximizing the revenue that's coming in, and very clear what we're getting through the stimulus program, and everything else, including the flexibility. We found out that there is actually more flexibility than we knew about before. Second point, we are not going to make budget cuts or reverse budget cuts in isolation. All of the budget cuts will be considered together, all the budget items will be considered together, because for every budget item that is saved, another must be cut. So the idea of, let's look at this program and say, we're gonna reinstate this, or deal away with this, we need to look at the entire package together. Now, we have made some exceptions to this in terms of what has to happen before June or June fifteenth or June thirtieth. We made a decision about teachers and layoffs, because there was a deadline that came before then that had to be decided. Third, and there may be some other issues that need to come up a little bit sooner. And one topic, for example, is the issue of magnet school transportation, because of the planning that's going into the next school year and the decisions that parents are making, and we may, that'd be one area where we might make an exception, but most things need to be considered together. Third, we are going to continually push for accurate information on finances by whatever means necessary, whether internally or externally. We will also require complete information on the impact of cuts, not only the cuts and the amounts money save, but what are the impacts educationally and on our community. Both factors will be carefully considered in our decision. Fourth, we will maintain close contact with our constituents groups as we make these decisions. And fifth, it is our goal to make budget decisions on the following principles. A, cuts must be made as far away from the classroom and the school site as possible. For this reason, we have already given priority to funding school sites over central administration. B, our employees, the teachers and the support staff who work with or near our students comprise our most valuable resource, and we place a high priority on maintaining a stable workforce. And C, when, and this means both certificated and classified. C, when sacrifices must be made, we believe that it should be shared by all, from the top to the bottom of the organization. So any concessions or cuts that are made would be made by all employees of the district. Finally, we realize that the uncertainty of the budget situation is anxiety-provoking for everyone. However, it is very important that these decisions be carefully deliberated. We've already seen the results of when we had to make decisions very quickly to meet certain deadlines. We now have the chance to do it in a more deliberate fashion. We appreciate the hard work that teachers, the administrators, the support personnel continue to do on a daily basis for our children. We will only succeed by working together as parents, teachers, administrators, the Board of Education, and the San Diego community, and we will strive to make this process as open and transparent as possible. So I just, my motion is that we adopt this, first of all, and then there'll be one more specific motion after this, as a board statement. That is my motion. Second.
If we move and second it, we do have one public speaker on this particular item, and we'll let the speaker come up, and then we'll do boardage at board members. Marion Snell?
I am Marion Snell, teacher librarian at Kimbrough Elementary. And I read Dr. Evans' statement on my board docs at home, and I was very confused, because there has been a change in the requirements for how we can spend our Title I money. And to me, Title I money should be included in budget analysis. Specifically, I'm talking about the fact that at Kimbrough Elementary, we lowered the class size in fourth and fifth grade. Now- Now, fourth and fifth grade has never been lowered by San Diego City Schools. It's one to thirty-two. So, if we choose to lower that, we're not supplanting district funds, even if we're lowering class size next year in those two grades. We lower our grades right. We lower fourth and fifth grade to one to twenty-two, and we have done that for the last two years. And when you look at this chart, you can see what happens. In the first two years I've given you there, the blue and the maroon, those two are two years when we were lowering class size like everybody else, you know, one to twenty-eight. Took four kids out of the room, made it possible to breathe in the room. But then, two years ago, we started doing the one to twenty-two. And you'll notice when you look at, and by the way, these figures are for the economically disadvantaged students, since those are the students that we're trying to help at Title I. Ignore the fact that that number and our total enrollment is exactly the same, but this is true. But look what happens. Look at the kids who are cream colored in fourth grade. Those are the aqua kids in fifth grade, and look what happened to those students. They went up sixteen points in English language development, they went up ten points in mathematics, and when you look at the science scores, only nine percent of our kids in fifth grade science were proficient or better under the old system. And the last two years, the first year they went up thirteen points to twenty-two percent, and the next year they went up an additional eleven points to thirty-three percent. So, that's a huge jump over nine percent. And we truly, truly believe it's because of the class size reduction, and we don't understand why we've been told that we cannot use our own Title I money in the way we see most effective. Even our primary teachers voted that the number-one thing they wanted to spend Title I money on was lowering class size in grades four or five. So, I just don't get it.
I will speak to that when you finish. Okay? Marion, it's always good to see you, but I would like to speak to that, okay? Title I money, federal money, always has strings attached, and I would like to say that we have had the proper oversight of it, but we have not. When we do not have the proper oversight and the funds are used incorrectly, the district gets penalized. Next year, next school year, the federal government will come out and review how we have spent Title I funds for the last few years. If they look at our records and see that we have been spending the funds incorrectly, we will be penalized. Now, I understand wholeheartedly that how it has been used has been successful. What that means again is that we had to find a creative way to reduce class size without using those funds, because what will happen is they will take those funds. Now, before we used Title I funds incorrectly, and the district had to pay back money. Now, they didn't come to the school sites because, I think, or maybe did a little bit, but it was taken mostly up in the central office and from our larger budget. But the bottom line is that when people are not observing what is going on at schools and people, I'm glad that the people voted to use it for class, smaller class sizes, but someone here, responsibility was to let them know that that was not one of the options. Now, what we have, we have, superintendent has got his staff together, and they are trying now to go out and really educate people exactly how we can use Title I funds. What I do not want to have happen this year when they come from the federal government with everything else going on is a penalty for using funds wrong. I would much prefer that we say we identified that maybe we did in the past, we've corrected that, so that we are not undergoing any penalties. That is why the schools were told, not just your school, all the schools were told they cannot use Title I funds specifically to reduce class size. Now, that does not mean there are other creative ways of using the funds to help those classrooms be a little, but I know there's other ways of doing it, but we cannot use it just directly to say on a dotted line, this is how the funds were used. So, even though it sounds like a change, it was not a change, it's just us going back through adhering to the rules. One of the things that we also have to remember, and I talk constantly to Superintendent Greer about, is holding people accountable, so that people that are in positions are informing people what they can and can't do. And when they're put in positions, they know what they can and can't do. So, we don't get to this point, because I understand how the people at Kimbrough and other schools feel, but it is not something that this board, now, this board can. What we can do on the other side is challenge the federal government to let us use those funds the best way we see fit. Now, that's what we can take on right now, but as far as what they're intending to be used for, that was the original intent, and there are guidelines attached to those funds. So, that is why that is being said. Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments.
I'll be glad to talk with you afterwards and tell you what we've learned about it.
I would appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let me make sure. It's my understanding that all the schools were now being informed of how they can use those funds the correct way. Mr. Villarreal?
Yeah, I just, we've got to refocus on Dr. Evans' motion, which is about the budget cuts, but I just, I think what Marion is bringing up from Kimbrough is what I've been hearing school after school after school. Bernie Elementary has also, you know, made a move in the last couple of years to reduce class size in fourth and fifth grade and can talk about similar results. I think that what I'm concerned about is that this is not, this is not an issue that's, you know, I think is so much related to our need to balance a budget. I think this is an issue about the relationship between parents and teachers and principals and school communities and the central office. And I think that when folks at the school sites develop strategies that, as Marion has done tonight, that he can document has had direct impact on student achievement, I think the job of the central office is to figure out how to support you in doing that, and I think that's, you know, what she was getting at is, you know, we've got to figure out, I mean, we've got, I think, push a little bit on this question of, you know, the proper use of Title I funds to reduce class size in fourth and fifth grade. I mean, I think that's a question that we need to push on some more, but I've heard from school sites that they've been told, "We can't use TIG money either to reduce class size in fourth and fifth grade," that "We can't use any resources to reduce class size in fourth and fifth grade." And I think what that's more about is a directive from the central office saying, "We want you to do something different than reduce class size in fourth and fifth grade." And I think we have to change this relationship because when people at the school side are saying, "We made a, you know, a decision based on our analysis of what works here at our school, and we did it, and it's had impact on student achievement," I think the district needs to say, "Okay, how do we figure out how to support you in doing that, not telling you we've got a better idea?" And that goes, and that goes back to, you know, I think a bigger discussion that we're going to continue a week from today about the relationship ongoing between the district and school sites that, again, is something that I think we need to change regardless of our budget situation.
Okay, I mean, Mr.-
Well, on this, on this item, on this item, I have mixed feelings, and the main reason, I think, is because there's already been discussions in today's commentary that discounts Statement C, which says, "When sacrifices must be made, we believe they should be shared by all." That's not what I heard said today. I heard you say that the cuts are at the top, and that they're not going to be shared by all, they're going to be at the top, and then they're going to be shared by those at the top. Okay? Now, you know, you just got through talking about your priorities are away from this school site, so I'm not going to argue with that, but I don't see how that can be consistent with Statement C. Now, we can debate this all you want, you probably just vote for it and let's go because it doesn't mean any more than what it says here, and, you know, we'll do whatever you decide to do anyway, whether you believe in this or not. But the point of it is, for example, let's say we end up somehow getting into Osile School Camp, Babo Park, we get into magnet transportation, or let's say we have differences in magnet transportation. One would be the dedicated magnets and the other would be the magnets that are, I'll call them, you know, school, within our school magnets. If you cut one and you don't cut the other, then you can't say you believe that you're sharing them, you know? I mean, I think the concept of sharing is contradictory to the direction this board's been going already. Okay? Now, you know, you have a right to go anywhere you want, but I think you shouldn't be using euphemisms that describe something other than what you're doing. See, and I think he said, say here in under C, "When sacrifices were made, we'll decide what they will be." That's more honest than what I've been hearing.
Okay, just to clarify, and I think the language should be better, I think, because I said in my follow-up explanation, "Sacrifices must be made, but they should be shared by all from the top to bottom of the organization, such as furloughs, medical benefits, and salaries." I was referring to employee, specific currently employed employees, sacrifices that it should be across the board from the top to the bottom.
But that's, yeah, but I'm using an example. Let's say that you decide in order to balance the budgets, you're going to cut a group of central office people, and you're going to get a lot of hurrahs about it, okay? You can't tell me that that's sharing equally, because you could take the numbers of people who are employed at central office and as a proportion, if you were going to be equal, then you'd say the proportional cuts that they're getting would be shared by the classified employees and would be shared by the certificate employees, but that's not what you've been saying. So, you can't say something in a statement and then act differently unless you don't mean what you said in the first place.
Yeah, well, the point eight there clarifies that the priority of the school site over the central administration.
Then, C is irrelevant.
Okay.
Superintendent Greer?
Dr. Greer? Thank you. First, I want to make sure that everybody understands that our staff has, at the central level, has a great deal of interest in making sure that our students do well in our schools, and we're not sitting down here telling people what to do. We do have a responsibility legally and ethically that if the federal law says you can't spend money a certain way, it's our responsibility to make sure we communicate that. If the state says you can't spend TIG money a special way, we have to be able to say that. If we've got people that are misspending magnet school funds, it's our responsibility to say, from an oversight standpoint, you shouldn't be spending dollars that way. Now, if we don't agree with how Title I money and TIG money should be spent, it's our responsibility, I believe, and I think this board has indicated a willingness to do this, to lobby and get that law changed, and we're all for that. But I don't want to leave here tonight with people thinking that we've got staff down here telling people that you can't spend money a certain way because we want you to do something else with it. It's not so. I'm just going to tell you, it's not so. And I don't mean to be combative about it, I'm just telling you. And we have, as I said, we have a responsibility to make sure that when the Title I program is audited next year by the federal government, that we don't have to pay back millions of dollars because we have knowingly allowed the money to be spent in an improper, spent in an improper way. That's one of the reasons that we have worked this year and have, you have approved, us having a Title I director who I think is doing a very good job. She goes to state national conferences, she's worked very hard to stay on top of what is the appropriate expenditure for Title I dollars, because she knows, as we do, that we're going to be audited. And so, she has no other plans for how she thinks the money should be spent. I think all of you know how I feel about small class sizes. We've recommended to have small class sizes in our post-impacted elementary schools. I'd like to have smaller class sizes too. I understand what she's saying, but again, I just want you to make sure that we don't have some kind of design down here on doing something different with those dollars. We're just trying to make sure that we stay in compliance with what the law is our staff understands.
All right, I just want to be clear that the issue of the Title I money and those details is not part of this statement?
Understood.
We understood, we were just commenting, because I think that's the important thing that is out there and people are having a lot of questions, and I'm glad it was brought up, and I'm glad it was spoken at this level so that people know what's going on around that area. Is there any more comments about this particular motion? The motion on the table is that we accept the item that has been proposed, I guess is our budget decisions, the five items by Dr. Evans, as our discussion, as our budget analyst process. If there is no other discussions, then let's vote. This passes three-one. The next item on the agenda, I think, is-
Dr. Evans had one more.
Yes.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, I said that I wanted to get more specific on item three after we did the general one, which was, the third item, I'll read again. "We are going to continually push for accurate information on finances by whatever means necessary, whether internally or externally. We will also require complete information on the impact of cuts, and both factors will be carefully considered in our decision." And again, I'm just going to emphasize that we have some very good and competent people working within the district on the budget and operations and so forth, but we need to have as objective information as possible. And so, my motion is, and then I will explain it, is to designate Phil Stover, who has been a consultant to the district, to be our independent budget and operations analyst to report to the board and to the superintendent. And the reason for this, that's my motion. Is there a second? Second, okay. Do you want to explain? We are in need of the most objective information possible, and this board has generally been opposed to consultants, but I do believe that there are special circumstances where we need to bring in an outside set of eyes, of someone who is not an employee of the district to objectively evaluate what is essential and what is not essential in terms of the costs of the district. And this 2009 board wants to get to the bottom of everything that's going on. As I said, we have some very good employees in the district who are working on this, and all of these people will certainly be able to cooperate with Mr. Stover. Specifically with Mr. Stover, I think what he would bring, and to designate him in this particular role, is that he has consulted for the district for a while. He is both under two different superintendents, under different boards. He has a background in education, psychology, operations, and finance, so he's able to look at the complete aspects rather than just one particular part, and so that's why I think he would be particularly good for this role, especially over the next couple of months as we're going through Plan A, B, C, D, and E.
So, if I understand, your motion is for Phil Stover to report to the Board of Education?
And the superintendent.
And the superintendent. Okay.
And the only other thing, detail for that would be that we would give Mr. Stover a desk and a telephone, a place to sit, an actual office. He's been kind of roaming around the district and consulting in different areas, and a clerical person from part-time to full-time, whatever he needs, to carry this out, because this is potentially a very, very important job for the district and to assist the superintendent in this.
Mr. Beback, please.
Well, I think I smell a conflict of interest because the gentleman has provided us with recommendations for organizations as it stands, so therefore, I don't see how he could be a person who would be impartial when it came to issues that he has already brought forward to recommend to the board. I'm not against the concept of independent person or budget analyst or anybody you want to call, but my personal view is to take somebody who has a vested interest in decisions that have already been recommended to the board for Ventus, take another role, which is the overseer of our budget, doesn't make sense to me. You know, I mean, if everything that he has on the table, any recommendation he's made is now off the table, and he will then, you know, recuse himself from those decisions and make no other comments, we're going to have a lot of stuff that's on this agenda that's going to be removed. So, my take on this is while the gentleman has competency, and I'm not going to argue that, and he's in the audience anyway, the point of it is that I think the principle of hiring somebody who's been, already been a consultant for the district to be now an overseer of the budget is not a good idea, and I'm not going to support it.
Okay.
I had initially brought up, actually, at a board meeting before, that we find an external person to come in and be an independent- external person to come in and be an independent analyst for the board. That particular idea wasn't well-received by the board. And to me, this is a more reasonable compromise, someone who is not an employee of the district but has shown himself to provide good ideas for cost-saving in the district and just empowering him to gather further information in other areas.
Yeah, I guess the only thing that I can clarify is, I support Dr. Evans' motion. I don't see that we're asking Phil Stover to be an overseer of the budget. I think we're asking him to provide independent analysis and information to the board.
Right.
Okay, so let me clarify this motion here again. Phil Stover to report to the Board of Education. You said that he needs a desk and he needs some part-time help and, so he's not roaming around. And I thought the superintendent, doesn't he have a place, doesn't he have a spot right now in the district? He just kind of roams around?
Yeah, we're going to move him down to the board office and let him have one of your secretaries, and I think that'd be...
Well, no, the office is across from you.
I'll give him my office. We'll make sure that he has the office space he needs. I do think that he's been working as an independent consultant, so he's been in and out of the district. And I think Dr. Evans is right, that he has moved around, he hasn't complained about it, but we'll, you know, we'll be glad to try to find him a place to park.
Well, I'll speak on this item, you know, and certainly, I know most board members understand my feeling about consultants. Because I think that if you have staff, you pay staff to do a job. And if the staff is not doing the job, I don't like paying for things twice. Then that is, that is really why I have a strong concern when we have consultants. I know that Mr. Stover's been in the district for a while. I know that he has been working with each department to help try to encourage them to think creatively and to help us with our financial delivery of current. And so, my concern certainly would be that he does remain neutral, that he does, and I think right now he does come to the board and he gives board members reports, and I expect those reports to be impartial for all the departments. We have said over and over again that we need to be efficient, and I know that in my conversations with him, he has been trying to drill down and get that efficiency piece. And so, I'm not opposed to this, but I don't want anyone thinking that this opens the floodgate for consultants. Because that, you know, I have a strong, I think that I would feel better knowing, and I don't know what the business current contract is, but I would certainly feel better knowing that it's going to be phased out at some point in time.
Right. And I think it should be pointed out, and when you said about not paying twice, paying employees and paying consultants, that Mr. Stover is already a consultant in the district, already under contract for the district, so we are simply designating him for this particular role for the life of the contract that we already have.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Any more discussion? Please vote. That passes three to one. The next item is our town hall meeting. Mr. Barrera and Dr. Evans.
Yeah, sure. So, we've talked at board meetings previously about how important that the decisions that are being made in Sacramento right now, the impact that those decisions have on what happens in San Diego. And we're not just talking about, obviously, the huge decisions that are made about the way that they've balanced our budget in Sacramento. We're also talking about the decisions that are made in Sacramento about the use of federal stimulus money, how and when, and how much comes to San Diego Unified. Again, when the legislature and the governor balanced the budget in February, their cuts to public schools disproportionately hurt San Diego Unified and other large urban districts because they cut categorical programs that we depend on heavily in large urban districts. We've been making a big effort, you know, to lobby our local delegation, our representatives, you know, to the state legislature, to make sure that when the federal stimulus money, the stabilization money that's meant to offset budget cuts, when it comes to California, that it gets redistributed in the same way that the cuts were made, namely that cuts to categorical programs are at least partially restored. This is a difference of tens of millions of dollars for San Diego Unified, depending on the way that they allocate the federal stimulus money. And then there are larger issues, you know, obviously about the way that folks in Sacramento have been making decisions about public education that I think we need to, you know, take on seriously so we don't keep having this crisis over and over again. So, what we're proposing is that on April 30th, Thursday night, at Kearney High School at 7:00, we hold a town hall forum. And we invite our state representatives, both Republican and Democrat, to come, to listen to us as parents, to listen to teachers, listen to students, listen to the, you know, what we've been dealing with, you know, over the last several months and responding to the cuts that have been made, you know, from Sacramento. But also to be clear, that we have expectations about the way that the federal stimulus money is going to come back into San Diego Unified. And so, I'm making a motion to propose that we hold this town hall forum where we invite our state representatives on April 30th. And if we pass this motion, then I, you know, I encourage everybody to beat the bushes and get as many people out as possible, you know, to this meeting. I think we need to, we need to pack Kearney High School and we need to have a dialogue with our, with our state representatives directly.
What you're saying is it's a school board meeting. I'm not sure that, you know, I know we've had a lot of meetings, we've called meetings to tell people what, apparently what we're doing, but I'm surprised that we're having a meeting, a board meeting where there's no decisions being made. You could, why don't you just call a forum and let it be that? But the last I saw, this was supposed to be a noticed school board meeting. And I'm, honestly, I think the reason the Brown Act has noticed meetings is because the public wants to see decision-making, not to see, I'll call it a media circus, or a contact or lobbying event with the people that are representing us. I don't mind, you know, calling a forum, but to say it is a formal school board meeting where we all must attend, I think that's ridiculous.
That's not, I'm not proposing that we...
That's what I've seen.
...that it's a formal school board meeting. I'm proposing a town hall forum.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Okay.
So, change the word. So, in the item there, it says we will sponsor a town hall forum, will be just fine, I think. I heard Ms. Barrera saying. Can I get a second for the motion?
I see.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any more board discussion?
Yeah, I just want to just back up the idea that it's an opportunity to interact with the legislators and let them know what we're thinking, but it's also, we've had some very supportive people from the San Diego delegation, both Democratic and Republican in terms of education funding. And so, the ones that have been supportive, we really need to let them know that we're behind them. It's also an opportunity to really rally for our public schools. So whether the marching band shows up, or the ROTC, or we drive a school bus into the, into the gym, or whatever it is, to show what the different programs are and what's going on. Because they, people who are higher up need to have a really clear picture about real families, real students, real teachers, and what's going on. Which is why, and I just mentioned this briefly, I would encourage people to gather a group of parents and go and meet with your assembly person or senator, actually have a face-to-face meeting, so they can hear a real-life story, as opposed to emails and letters and phone calls, which are all fine too, but it's just something else to do. So I support this idea as a general town hall forum.
Okay, there's no more board discussion, please vote. It passes four zero. The next item is item H01. Item H01 is the Operational Expectation Monitor Report OE7 Asset Protection. Dr. Greer?
Well, I'm a reviewer of the item. It says that we have some evidence here that was given to us, and so I'm saying I think we should approve it.
Okay, move it.
I see.
Second?
Thank you, Board President Jackson. This has to do with your policy, GC6 Governance Culture and your work plan, and it basically talks about the operational expectations protecting the assets of the district. And I hope you've had an opportunity to review this. I'd like to say a special thank you to Bill Koba and his staff for taking the lead in putting this together. There's a lot of good information here, and we'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have. But it basically is pretty straightforward in terms of the staff presenting you with some very concrete evidence of how we are in compliance with protecting the assets of the school district. So if you have questions as board members, Bill and his staff will be glad, or I will be glad, to try to answer them for you. If not, we're seeking your approval of this.
Any more board questions or discussion?
I have no problem with this being complied with. The judgment we have to make is that it's been complied, we're not in compliance, we're complied with no exceptions. As it stated, it's compliance, there's no problem, in my opinion. But the truth of the matter is insurance isn't the only way to protect assets. And so, having adequate fire protection devices in appropriate places in schools, to have the kind of, you know, things that are required in workplaces, to have, you know, the kind of safety equipment necessary to wash eyes and chemistry labs and all that stuff, is not insurance. And those are, that's still protecting assets. So, this is a narrow explanation of what I think the charge is, and I'm going to have to say they're in compliance, but I got to say that in my opinion, I think there's a broader measure of asset protection that may be, you know, may be appropriate. You know, it's not just that you have, for example, the school buses with the fence around them, that they're insured against, self-insured against theft, but it might mean that you have some kind of special devices to protect them, or that you maintain them appropriately, which isn't in here, but that's asset protection too, isn't it? So, we did away with maintenance, some of it, so, or even replacement. So, the question is, you know, is that, it's not covered here. So, the next time it comes around, I think we ought to maybe look at a broader way to interpret it. But as it stated, it's fine.
Good point, Ms. Ubeck. Dr. Greer?
Yeah, that's all I was going to say. It says that it is a good point, and if, as board members have a chance to spend some time reviewing this or in more depth, if you would let us know what other areas that you would like to see us include in here. Because this is a large school district and when you start looking at protecting the assets of the district, you can interpret this in a very bald way. And at the same time, we want to pay attention to the areas that are important to board members and to the board as a whole. So we'll be glad, as you read this, for us to expand the scope of this to address your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, please vote. It passes four zero. Next, we have the I items, which is Superintendent's Consent Agenda, actioned by the Board of Education. In item I, at this point, the agenda means that all items appearing in section I are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Generally, consent agenda items are matters which members of the board and superintendent concur are routine in nature and should be acted upon in one motion to conserve time and prevent the focus of other than routine matters. In additions to items I01, I03, I20, which was withdrawn by the staff, Ms. Fu, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Yes. I09, I'd like to poll I11 and I12.
Oh, I'm going to keep, hold up, I'm going to keep, just a second. We got a few speakers. We have requests to provide public testimony on consent items, and we have item I02, which has been pulled, and item I33. Okay, we'll take those two people, I'm sorry, Mr. Goldwater and Ethel Lockins, would you please come forward? We will hear them, and then board members can tell me what items they wish to pull.
Board of Education, Ms. Jackson, President. Dr. Greer, hello. Yeah, I know you're going to be there at the school, the 12th, I already know that.
Which one we're pulling, talking about? Are you invited?
And he's I02, I'm sorry.
I02 is what I want to talk about. The Board of Education, back in December, made a decision on positions called Zone Managers. At that time, we were appalled that one particular individual received the promotion to Zone Manager. Comment was made after that point of the incompetency of this particular individual, and as time goes on, I feel an obligation to the board and to the public and to the people that are under this person to let the board know of an incident of incompetency. So that's why I chose I02. Last Friday, there was an incident in which, at a specific elementary school, there was an incident of concern of safety of one of the custodians. This particular Zone Manager was contacted, I'm not going to give you his name right now, and he had a conversation with one of the union representatives, and it was a safety issue. In the OSS contract, the current OSS contract, Article 10 has to do with safety and health. In that contract, that language that's in there, most of it has been there for 15, 16 years. In fact, the current, or former, I don't know if that's how you look at it, Director of Labor Relations actually wrote some of that language many years ago. When this safety issue was brought before this particular Zone Manager, the Zone Manager was very flippant and very unconcerned with this when it comes to the safety of a custodian at the site. And the thing we are concerned with is that this particular Zone Manager, when he worked as a COS Custodial Operations Supervisor for 19 years, he is aware of that area of the contract that's been brought to him as recently as maybe a year and a half ago, he totally denied knowledge of it. Now, this could be because he might be suffering from a medical ailment, possibly dementia, or because he simply is incompetent to understand the gravity of the situation when it comes to penal codes, safety on public schools, as our council is aware of, and the actual contract which spells it out. So my concern is to notify the board of another incident of incompetence of this particular former COS, who was voted in by the board in December of 2008 by the new board members. And Ms. Jackson, I know that you voted against his confirmation, thank you very much, but the other two board members were unaware of his competency until after the vote. So our job is to let you know of his incompetency as each episode takes place. And there will be more episodes because a person who's incompetent will continue being incompetent. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Locking?
Mine is I33.
I33?
I33. Good evening, school board members. CSE has brought multiple options to explore the opportunities to develop a second crew. We're speaking about our asphalt workers to perform their work and to also have the district purchase equipment to keep the contract in-house. We want to participate in developing strategies to keep the work in-house because we're looking at, what is that, $2 million that, you know, we're talking about savings that could have been kept here in-house had we had our second crew. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, does any board member wish to move any item from the consent agenda?
Sure. I09.
I09.
I11.
I11.
I12.
I12. Mr. Barrera? Ms. Dr. Evans?
I33.
I33. And I want to pull I28. Okay, Mr. Ubeck, you're up first.
Okay, I09.
Okay, before you start from me, screen, put the other items real quickly. Before you start from these, go ahead and put the other items real quickly.
I'm sorry?
Can someone make a motion to approve the other consent items, so we can get those ready?
Sure, I'll move all the others, but the ones we're pulling.
Okay. Moving second it, please vote. Thank you. Passes four zero, thank you. Mr. DeBak, I'm sorry.
Okay, just I O nine, I told Dami about it, I think she'll probably want to come up. And I'm trying to get my piece here. If you look at the exhibit, transfer summary for February two thousand and nine, I challenge the Board to understand it, but we're voting on it. All right? That's a first point. But then, if I look at I O nine in the hard copy version, which I have, then you see some more, I'll call it readable, information. Well, I'm going to go through it, so, you know, I don't know how we can multiply, get it up to the size of everybody, but I'm going to pick some certain parts of it just to show you. And first of all, I'm going to say, there's things I think I understand, so I'm going to explain them first. Okay, one of them is, for example, I'll take the, an account that is, I guess it would be on the, let's see, page two, schoolside block grant, a general fund one thousand, there's three entries, it's about one, two, three, fourth down on the page, oh, page two. Okay, and here's what it says, it's got description, general fund, three times with three thousands next to it, I'm assuming that's the account number. Then, next to that, it has resource, and then it's got O two hundred, which I'm assuming is a subaccount. And under that, it says schoolside block grant. So it's a general fund, schoolside block grant, and then over in the column where there is our account and description, it says a thousand, account a thousand, certificate salaries, and all account thousands are certificate salaries, I'm aware of that. That's going to be fourteen hundred and ninety-nine dollars, okay? Then it says books and supplies, four thousand, there's the account number for books and supplies everywhere in the district, and it says it's a minus four eight two one, okay? And then, it says services and other operations is three two two, three thousand two hundred and twenty-two. Well, those all add together, so the effect on schoolside block grant is a transferred money within the schoolside block grant account. Right? Right. Okay, now, I get to something with a negative balance, and this kind of scares me. And so on the same page, it come down to, I'll go one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh group of it, it says general fund one thousand, general fund one thousand, a resource is O seven hundred, which is bi-literacy, which is the code for bi-literacy, and then it has a thousand, certificate salaries are minus fifty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. I'm assuming that they took that money out of bi-literacy certificate salaries, and then they took also another seven thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars out of employee benefits, which is probably a accommodating amount of money that goes with the salary. So the negative amount shows, the total amount is a minus fifty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars. So what account did it come, did it go to or come to? You can't find it. There's no way. All I know is that somehow, a group of dollars, fifty-nine thousand dollars worth of accounts went out of bi-literacy and went into some general fund account. But I don't know what general fund account it went into. Was it a reserve? Was it just general fund to cover some of the expenses? Or how much did general fund get rich, I suppose, by fifty-nine thousand? I see a minus, so there must be a plus. But see, this Board has got to vote on all of these things, and the assumption is if we vote on it, we understand it. Now, some of these actions may be to accomplish some of the budget reductions we've already kind of tentatively agreed on. I don't know that. But if I vote on this, I'm going to be stuck with a vote that I don't even understand. Okay? Now, I'm going to go down, and you can go down, and you can find all kinds of negative balances. If you, I'm going to move on. The ones that are zero, I can understand. Those are interfund transfers within an account. So that, let's say I've got, if it was a school, all it is, I've taken from books and supplies, which is our general account, by the way, the new board members, books and supplies is where you put money, you don't know what to call it, it's like miscellaneous expense. So you throw in books and supplies because you don't know what to call it, so it's in books and supplies. But all of a sudden, you find out you've got to pay some people some payroll, so you take the money out of books and supplies and put it in certificate salaries. That's the way you handle this miscellaneous stuff, okay? So, but, so anytime there's a zero and it's the same account, basically, I understand all you do is mix money around to get the count to come out right. But when you come into huge amounts, like two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars here in the general fund for, I'll say, this is page, I'll leave you page five, one, two, three, write them down, the general fund, and then P T A, central positions, part-time central positions, P T A, I don't know what that is. But anyway, certificate salaries has a positive, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, that means it got added in, okay? Because negative means it comes out, so positive means it added in, okay? And then, there's a hundred twenty-one thousand worth of classified salaries added in, and then, there's fifty-two thousand of employee benefits. I'm assuming those are parallels, that employee benefits includes the benefits for both of those salaries. So that part, I might even understand. But it says two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars is the amount of the change, but it doesn't say, well, did it come out of general fund? What fund did it come out of in the general fund? Or did it come out of general fund miscellaneous, which is books and supplies? I thought that general fund had a lot of subaccounts in it, just like these other accounts do, so therefore, you don't have a general fund, a collective account, what you do is have a general fund specific account. So, you know, in my limited knowledge of bookkeeping, I'm saying, if I vote on this, I don't even know what the effects were on half these accounts. You know, and I can, I can kind of say, well, I got to trust you. So you go to page, maybe we do need to stow it, but I don't know if this will help. Page seven, you know, but I, and the point of it is, that, you know, we maybe needed them all along. But to have us to assume that every time there's some of these, what everybody calls routine transactions, that we understand it, is hogwash. I'm pretty good at finance, and people even up there know that I can estimate almost as well as they can calculate. You know, and I tell you how much a layoff is, it's pretty close. Okay, but you go to this next one, here's page seven, one, two, three, four, five down, is general fund again. This one has a minus one million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, that came out, apparently came out of limited English proficiency, but the numbers don't add up. Well, yes, it does, reserves. There it is. So they took out of a limited English proficiency, a reserve account name, I never even knew they had a reserve of a million for unlimited in English, but there it is. They took it out, and so now they have a million three that's going into the general fund, that one account. Is it going into general fund miscellaneous or general fund salaries? Now, Dami, it's your turn. I don't know where these monies are going, and if I see a minus or a plus, I would expect the effect on the general fund to also show, but they don't. So, you know, back to bookkeeping, you know, a debit and a credit, you know, you've got a debit one account and credit the other. Just you can't just credit general fund, general fund's bigger than that.
Okay, the report that you have is a summary of the transfers of appropriations. And you're correct, Mr. DeBak, the report is not very clear on what's being transferred, because that is a summary. And in order for you to see the real transaction, we have to give you the detail, which is unfortunately, a very big report. And in the past, we used to provide that, but because it was so big. The report that you need to see, and I think, you know, we can provide that to you, is over five hundred pages long.
No, but you know what? This is a, this is a, I think you could put an explanation on this page, okay? I'm going to go to the very last item. This is fine, guys. Go look at the last page. Page number fifteen, the very last entry, workers' compensation. We, in this account, what we did was, we took out four point five million, and we put it back.
That is one of the transactions that the Board approved to take some money out of the workers' comp fund, I believe.
But they didn't change the account at all. If you take, if you take four and a half million dollars out of workers' comp outgo and put, and subtract it out of reserves, then you basically have not affected the balance of the workers' compensation fund at all.
Correct.
And it didn't affect the general fund either.
No, because there is another transfer that happens, that this report only shows all of the transfers within the same fund or the same resource that crosses major accounts, which is required by the ed code. So whenever we move appropriations between major accounts, you will see it in this report. The transfer of money, the four and a half million from the workers' comp fund to the general fund is done in a different transaction, which is a transfer in and a transfer out.
Let me, let me just offer a suggestion.
Okay.
All right? Since there are lots of these that end up in zeros, which are transfers within a fund, you could have all of them listed together that all had zeros, and you could say, all we did was move the funds around within the fund, and that's how we did it. We did it because we think that's a way that it's going to balance the books, because that's the way the charges are going to come in. So that's a simple, do you understand that? Okay? So now, then you find the ones that have all a negative balance, and you say, we're taking money and we're putting it into the general fund for some reason, okay? And I'll accept that explanation, but what I won't accept is a whole bunch of gobbledygook that I have to go through and play detective on, over fifteen pages worth of stuff that I don't think this Board understands one line of it. And I think I do, but I think it's, it took me most of the afternoon to understand it and almost all of the weekend, just to figure it out. So what I'm saying is, let's make these reports to us more, I'll call it, make reports for dummies. I'm a dummy. Give me a report that I can understand.
Sure.
Don't give me a report that I can't understand, that people say, well, you got to vote for it because you have to approve this transfer. Well, if you have to approve it, then you ought to understand it. And we ought to make it so the reports that we get are understandable. Okay? Now, it's not your fault, it's the entire system that's at fault. You know? Get the act together, get the reports together, and if you can categorize them in a way that can explain one, the way I explained it, and say, these all are just like that, we'd be a heck of a happier Board.
Yeah, the report that I mentioned to you, the one that shows all the details, have the explanations.
Well, maybe we need to compromise. But you know what?
But it's big.
I absolutely believe that, you know, I went up there and I said, you know, we call Tricky Dick Tricky, and you guys are richer than he was, because I can't read anything you say, and I had a county major. You know? So the least I could have is something that a layman could understand.
Sure.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. That's all, you know, I move approval, but only because I sort of understand.
For one O nine.
Well, I didn't mean to do that to you guys, but...
I know, because we've been through this. Yes.
Well, I mean, it seems like we could either send this back for better explanation or request that the next one be done more clearly.
I think the lesson's out. I don't think we have to go back. I have to say that I believe this is routine. I have to say it. But this is not the way it was before either. This is a different way to report it, because I've been here and I've seen it different ways before. I've seen it where you did all these zero balances within one single account. You know, and this is a different way of reporting this particular transaction. I didn't see it this way two years, three years ago. Maybe it's, you know, it's a maybe new software, I don't know. But my take on this is, I don't think we should go back and pick through this. I think if they get the lesson that from here on out, the reports ought to be readable, that's worth it.
Please.
I'll say.
Is the motion a second? Any more discussion?
Yeah, I'm willing to support it, as long as the idea is that these come through every month evidently, that the next one, it doesn't, we don't have to go from this little one to this huge, five hundred page one, just like Mr. DeBak said, just a little explanation about some of these things that are understandable to the layman.
Okay. Please vote. If it passes four zero, Mr. DeBak, item one eleven, please.
Yeah, one eleven. There's only a part of this, and I've talked to, I try not to bribe side staff, I mean, Dami knew I was coming, so. Okay, so under the middle, this one's the, is called independent contract agreements. And I want to go down to the portion in the office of the Chief Middle School Improvement Officer, is that it? No, no, no. It's the Chief Information and Technology Office. We've got so many chiefs, I don't know how many Indians we've got. But, okay, so the office of the Chief Information and Technology Officer made a suggestion. And here's what the problem is for me, and I've been around, as you know, considerable amount of time. I don't like it when I see somebody saying, I want to take an offline program, FileMaker five point five or FileMaker nine, and use it to gather information that's essential to the database of the district. Okay? So the triggering question for me was, why didn't it go into our regular standard data system, PeopleSoft or whatever, you know, system we have, what's our, that's our major database? Why do we have to use some kind of cockamamie program off to the side to get this information, or it could be plowed into the regular system, and we use it for more than one purpose? Now, you can answer it. I got an answer, and I'm satisfied, but I think the Board needs to hear it. You know?
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to clarify this and provide you a little bit of additional background. I first want to tell you that this was first brought to me in January, and I had the exact same questions. It actually is a support database for special education and came through the Office of Student Services. Since that came to us and was going to the Board then, we decided to meet with both the special ed team that use this data and our database engineers and analysts to say exactly that. How can we get this into our SQL, what we call our standard SQL database system? As we looked further into exactly what was trying to be accomplished, we realized one key area here. One is, if you notice, the version of FileMaker Pro is going from five point five to nine. That's a huge leap. Just to get the data that they currently have into a system that we can actually then take over and manage appropriately, we need to get it to FileMaker Pro nine. So we've re-sculped the project after looking much deeper into what the request was all about, with the promise that this is a pathway to get this database out from the individual department. And these are things that I talked to, I think originally, when we talked about our overall IT convergence. We had lots of these databases sitting around. This is one of those. It's mission critical. I think Arun might be able to speak to more about what he uses it for, but this process is a pathway for us to get it to the professional system that it needs to be in, which is exactly your point.
So sometime in the future, we will be having a new budget, a new budget, they call migrating from FileMaker nine to...
No, it won't be taken over into our system.
PeopleSoft or what do you call it?
Well, it'll actually be brought into our data warehouse, which will combine information from Xangle and PeopleSoft.
All right, that's okay, that's fine. But, okay, but I just, and I continue to send this message, and I hope the rest of the staff that has stuff that comes to you, when I see something like this, I'll bring it up every single time.
Appreciate it.
I understand that they got to do it. I'm not going to fight it. I'll vote for it, and I move approval. But the point is, if I see somebody trying to convert an old style system to manage their own department separately, it's going to be called on every time. Unless there's an explanation, which should have been here, that says, this will be migrating from here on out into our standard system, and therefore, we'll never have to do it again.
I apologize for the lack of explanation.
That's okay. Well, that's okay, but, you know, I think the idea is what's important, and that is, we are trying to build... that is, we are trying to build a database system on all of our information that's fully compatible for the entire district to access so that we don't have to go offline to get information.
Absolutely, and I need your support for that.
All right. So I move approval.
Okay, is there a second for that? I have one comment about this item, and certainly I, I would have approved it as well, and it's not with the IT, it's with the Chief Middle School Improvement Officer. And, and again, I go back to the superintendent, um, I go back to the issue of if people, I mean, this item is to provide staff training on classroom management, and I would expect an SIO, let alone Chief SIO, to be able to provide that. And, and this is the second or third time that one of them have put this on the agenda for someone to come in and provide training, that I think that they should be able to provide. And again, if they're not gonna provide it, then, then it's like paying for something twice. This is the 25 staff members, and you're telling me that our, our, one of our SIOs, one of our chiefs can't sit down, it would be 25, it would be 25 people, and help them? I, I have a, I have a problem with that. And that's why I get concerned when you bring outside consultants in, because these people are not building relationships with the people at the school sites. And that's why earlier, Mr. Beck mentioned, it's like the district is over here and the schools are over here, because whenever there's a problem, rather than our district people who are supposed to go out there and work with them, they bring in another third party. So there is no relationship building.
I'm assuming that this $9,000 cost is, well, that's the payment to this group.
For two days.
Because there's, because there's obviously another cost of the 25 staff members' time.
That's fine.
But, um, but this is what we're addressing, is the outside consultant.
You're talking about Sheila's stuff, I'm sorry. No, Sheila's stuff is consultants. Sorry to tell you that, but the trainers that come in to train you in how to do behavior modification, or whatever it is, we've had 100 different companies over the years that come in and teach us how to run our classrooms. And the trouble is, then they bring, I've had some of them come back year after year to the same school. Sheila would attest to that. And I would raise that question just like she did. But this is a new name for me, but the point of it is, if they come in once, then somebody oughta learn from it and then be able to teach everybody else how to do it. And if we have 100% turnover at the school, then, I guess you gotta do it over.
Well, I'm gonna give Sheila two. In terms of being within the district, I'm sure that there is a teacher within the district who is an expert at classroom management, who's just been phenomenal.
You don't know who they are?
I don't know who they are, but I'm sure we can find out and ask some other teachers. And, um, you know, why not have that person come in and teach the other teachers?
Well, we haven't got a trade, we haven't got a, a list of them. I'll tell you, if you're gonna ask them, "Who's the expert on teaching ninth grade algebra?" you won't find it. You're gonna ask them, "Who's the best classroom manager in the school district in the sixth grade?" I don't think you're gonna find it, 'cause they don't have a list of them. We should have a list of all those experts, but we don't.
As we've seen him up for training.
Try your teacher of the years.
Well, I understand, but those are voted on by individual faculties, and they're not voted on for a given task. Uh, you know, that's okay.
Anyway, the point, Superintendent, this point has been stressed over and over again, and obviously it's not getting to the staff.
Well, so you, I'm, I'm not gonna not vote for this.
I, I, and I support the rest of the items on here. I mean, I'll support it, but my point is that, at some point in time, staff needs to realize that they, that they are not doing, bringing in people is not its answer. At some point in time, Superintendent, someone has to hold people accountable for doing their jobs. And if an SIO can't teach classroom management, basic classroom management, and I mean, I mean, I've had a classroom for five years and I can go teach classroom management...
Okay, you're hired.
Anyway, let's move on to the item, please, and move on. We got people waiting to speak.
So what, what is the motion to?
Well, I made the motion to approve the, uh...
All of the items.
Independent Contract Agreements, and, and I picked the one that I was talking about. Sheila picked another one, but I moved the whole group.
Right, because this is already done. It was done, I guess, March 11th, March 13th.
We didn't vote. We didn't vote.
You're asking to ratify.
It's being asked to be ratified.
Okay, okay, but I guess I just would like to hear from Dr. Greer as far as, what are your thoughts about school improvement officers going out and hiring people to do this type of thing?
Well, I, I think, again, that I don't have a lot of disagreement with what Member Jackson is saying. I, I think that school improvement officers are not the only folks in the, uh, school district that can do training. We have a lot of excellent teachers that can do training as well. I think the big key to a lot of this is how we have a staff development department put together and how it's organized. And anytime you have a, a teacher teaching staff training, you also have to worry about them leaving their classroom and who fills in for them over a period of time. School improvement officers doing the training, uh, you have to also be concerned with what they're doing with their other time. And so it has to be a balance and a blend, but I don't disagree with what she's saying. I don't oppose to bringing consultants into the district, but when they come in, I, I agree with what Mr. Beck was saying, that they ought to be not training schools of teachers, but they ought to be training groups of, of teachers and other employees, maybe a vice principal or a counselor or a principal, to become trainers of trainers, so that they, they train a group of folks that then can do the training for the district, so that, as Ms. Jackson said, you don't have to continue to bring in outside groups over and over. And that's what our goal is, that's what we're striving towards.
Well, I, I, I can vote for approving this one item if there's an understanding that this board is not approving of having consultants come in for this type of thing unless there's some sort of extraordinary circumstances to justify it.
It's already been done, apparently. So then we just...
I know, I'm just talking about this point forward.
But people gonna do it without, without asking us, we gotta either say, "You can't do it unless you ask us," or, or keep ratifying.
They're not gonna keep ratifying.
You know, the issue is, you know, do, how do you feel about, you know, I, I agree with Sheila, there's issues here we need to talk about, but it, I've always had a fit on the ratification. Because what happens is, ratification's already a done deal, there's nothing you can take it away. But the point of it is, if you keep saying, "Well, I don't like this happening," then what you do is say, "Well, it's our policy, you can't do this unless we approve it in advance." So then if you wanna do that, then somebody better bring a motion in to deal with that. And I don't think this is the time, but, but I think we have to have it on the agenda, what our policy is on the future use of consultants in training teachers for behavioral or any other purposes.
Okay, we'll bring that forward.
Yeah.
Okay, this has been moved in second. Can we, please vote? Thank you.
We didn't vote.
I didn't vote. I'm just wrong, I'm sorry.
I assumed you voted for it.
Okay. There you go, I voted, okay.
All right.
Okay, um, I...
One more, I have one more to go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to do that to you.
Number 12, yeah.
Yeah, I-12.
I-12.
Okay, I-12 is an interesting one, and I'm gonna vote to approve it, but my point is very simple. In this school district, uh, we speak, my estimate, and these guys are gonna find me awful little, my estimate is that we have approximately 7,000 seniors. Okay, we have around 12,000 kindergarteners, and I, my guess is we got around 7,000 seniors. Okay, you can put me off by whatever you want, but we graduated in mid-year, on this list, 20 kids. If we were doing it proportionally, we should be graduating a half the senior class that we would graduate, because why would we make people stay around if they met graduation requirements another half year just because? See, I, I used to do this work, okay, and I know that we did never, 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 even at Garfield, encouraged kids to leave early if they met graduation requirements, but they should. Why should a kid at Crawford, there's only one of them, by the way, graduating mid-year, Crawford Idea, why should, why shouldn't all the kids at Crawford have the opportunity to graduate midterm if they met the requirements? Well, the reason is because they're not encouraged to do so. And so if we have 7,000, I don't know how many seniors there are at Crawford, I'll make up another number, say 400. Crawford Idea, make it now 200. Okay, so then we take 200 kids, of them only one graduated. The odds are, there should've been 100. So my point is, and, and Nellie, you can pay attention if you want, but I think we as a policymakers should decide that what we're encouraging is kids, when they meet the graduation requirement, we don't, we don't want them just to go around and earn a SADA. What we wanna do is say, "Atta boy, atta girl, go, go get some junior college under your belt, because we're not gonna keep you for one more semester for no reason." But, but this is evidence right here in front of us, that we are not graduating a proportionally number who showed up mid-year. Now, it's a policy we never agreed to on this district. I can say, in the past, staff have said, "No, we don't wanna do this." So as a board, we gotta look at it. But my point is, I may move that these kids graduate, I'm not gonna hold them back, but the point of it is, 20 out of...
7,000.
7,000 is not a very good ratio for mid-year graduation, when it's a half of the year. There should've been a half of them graduating a half a year.
Dr. Greer?
Now, this, I mean, that's the philosophy that the board, if you, the majority of you decide that you want to take a position on, will certainly, uh, support it and take action, communicate. A lot of these students are fifth-year seniors that came up short of the 44 units of graduation credit. And versus having these students continue to go to school all year, um, these students now have met the 44 unit credit and can graduate in mid-year and go ahead and go on to community college, or go on into a, hopefully, a meaningful job. And that's, that's basically what this is about. We are trying to, to work hard to help students who fell short. You may recall, last year, we had 75 students who had 40 units of credit but did not meet the 44 units, and they had, they had, they had 40 units of credit and they had met all other graduation requirements, passed the Casey, uh, and done all the other things, but they fell short of graduation. This is part of that group.
Thank you. I think Mr. Beck's point is, is a good point, that we should, that we should look forward to graduating students out earlier and later, but whenever they're ready to process them so they don't have to wait around for graduation date. Okay, any discussion?
Second.
Second, and, okay, let's vote. Okay, um, 4-0, I put item I-28. What I would ask my, um, fellow peers to do, I-28, is, um, our, um, city center rate schedule, and, um, uh, this year we have an increase, and the increase is according to our own, um, uh, district policy, K-4,000, which says that every year we adjust it according to, uh, cost of living allowance. And what I would ask is that we suspend that this year because, um, unless the staff has a different reason, I mean, we're in an economic crisis, our facilities aren't rented by high-end people. Our facilities are rented by nonprofits, and they're all struggling. And at a time when everyone is struggling, I would ask that we keep the rental the same as last year, or use a direct cost recovery that you have listed in this agenda item for this year.
The one of these is commercial. Commercial is a person who's a profit-making organization.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the first part of this, where it says, on page one, "The short-term use, a charge schedule for nonprofit organizations." And I, I don't, I disagree with the commercial piece, but I just think for the nonprofits that are really struggling, um, that we consider not raising, uh, the rate.
Okay, so, so the first attachment, which is the, uh, a short-use term charge for nonprofit organizations, you're saying we freeze it at the 2008 rate?
Right, which is 13, like the first one would be 13.
I'll second that.
Okay.
The rest, I'm not gonna move on.
Okay.
Okay, so I second that, to freeze at, uh, the 2008 rate.
For nonprofits.
For nonprofits.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
We need to vote on that.
Well, I need to vote on it. Move approval, move thing.
Yeah.
With that modification.
Okay.
Okay.
You're gonna have this up?
I need a, I need a second, though. I can't, I can't make a motion.
Well, I made the motion that we...
Now we need a second.
Second.
Okay, and now I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the whole exhibit with the modifications we just voted on.
Right.
So then if we get to that and vote yes, we're gonna have to vote...
Okay, so now we can vote. Thank you. Okay, that passes 4-0. Okay.
We'll go ahead and, uh, issue with the change only for the commercial schedule.
Very much.
And appreciate the feedback, and that's the purpose of coming. Every year we have to do this, we follow the ed code and factor in, and it's your prerogative to make those adjustments.
We, we understand, thank you very much. The next item is I-2, I-33, please.
Okay, and I-33, I just want, this comes up a lot in revisiting in terms of the paving and so forth. I just want to know, I realize we have the force account issue here, um, I just wanna know, I guess, if we have, if we're making any progress on this in terms of moving some of this stuff in-house, if the administration is finding some way, either through the existing laws or through changing the laws, to bring more of this in-house.
I don't have to talk about it. Okay, um, this is a big, uh, big 2 million bucks worth of stuff, and it's maybe a piece at a time, I can't tell you that. But, um, I think before you do that, you have to know the capacity of your existing staff. You know, one of the representations we get over the years is that these projects are beyond the capability of our existing staff. They're our existing asphalt, and the lady that came and testified may disagree, but, uh, but the existing asphalt staff has traditionally repaired deteriorating asphalt. They have not made full installations, okay? Now, if the proposal would be, and if the, the board wants us to do full installations, I don't personally believe that we have the capacity, and I think she would even recognize that, she would want the staff to be expanded in order to do it.
Let me ask this question.
So, well, I'm trying to finish if I can. So my point of it is, I think before we act on this particular, uh, item and, let's say, reject it, we should ask that, "Yes, we'll pass it, but we want a report talking about the capacity of our existing staff and what it might cost to, for us to accommodate a $2 million paving contract." 'Cause that's a lot of square footage of asphalt. You know, I mean, I don't, I honestly don't, I don't believe our staff could do it. And I think if we double our staff, we doubt we could do 2 million bucks worth. But that's, that's maybe a point I don't have a clue to, the lady may know more than I do. And she probably does about her business, that's her business. But, so the point is, you need to know your capacity before you start making knee-jerk judgments over whether we're, you know, we need to fully use our own people. We shouldn't be laying off asphalters and hiring consultants, you know?
Okay. The one question I was gonna comment on is that you, you have laid out, uh, some of the in-house and the IDQ, and the, the amounts, and it seemed like the in-house costs are always quite a bit smaller, and all of the IDQ is a, a bit higher. What I don't know from looking at this document is I don't know how large the job is, because, um, that gives us a, a better comparison. And so, I mean, I look here at Penn, it says asphalt repair and seal coat, and then I look at Hardy, it says asphalt, you know, overlay and seal coat, and it's like, you know, 83,000 compared to 47. And, and so it looks like our staff only does repair? They don't do the actual overlay, is that what you're trying to say in this?
What we have done here is...
They can do it, okay, okay. Hold on, hold on, I'm just trying to, trying to get to the facts.
We, we can. We have a very capable staff. Um, the projects that you see, the 10 projects that we show for the IDIQ, the primary driver for those is that they do exceed the force account limitations. If we were, and through all of this, our, our in-house staff is fully employed. If we were to bring additional folks on to do more asphalt work in-house, we could do that, we, uh, would very likely have capital expenditures and equipment that we would have to do to...
And they'd be idle sometimes. They would also be idle sometime because the jobs don't run all year round. They would also be idle sometime because the jobs don't run all year round.
But with the amount, wait a minute, hold up. I don't think that would be true because in this document somewhere when I was reading it, it said with the amount of work that we have, we have some two-point-one million square feet of asphalt maintenance, I can't say, asphalt maintenance going on. Two-point-one million square feet means that it's going to be ongoing work for a very long time for a staff that we have. So, so then the, and, and so I can't understand why if we add the staff and the equipment because our schools are not going anywhere.
Again, one of the drop-
The repairs are going where? Where are the repairs going? Somebody said the repairs are going away. I'm like, they're not going anywhere either. Two-point-one million square-
Twenty-one million is the total amount of asphalt pavement within the district. And then what you see between the two tables, both in-house and IDIQ contractors, four million square feet of asphalt, asphalt made pavement that we intend to maintain over the course of the next year. I think what we did between the last time we presented this and today is you said, "What's the maintenance plan? Where are you going? How big are the jobs?" And differentiate and ensure that we have fully utilized the district staff. We have a district staff of seven, three asphalt workers, four assistants, total of seven. We went through the entire maintenance plan for the next twelve-plus months, and the separation of the two is based on the force account. So, if we do add people, if we get to the threshold for labor hours or material, we will have to defer to the ed code. So, what we show here are thirty-one jobs that are below the thresholds that we will fully utilize our staff for and all their available equipment and materials. The ten jobs that show up on page three of six, or page three, are those jobs that are beyond the force account thresholds. So, we're just complying with the ed code but ensuring that our staff is fully utilized. And we actually describe, the maintenance strategy says that we will fully occupy our folks, and we will tend to emphasize the spot repairs, the potholes and safety traffic control issues. The jobs that you'll find on the page that are reserved for the force account are very large, major-sized jobs, several kinds of equipment and many people to do it at one time. The example I would give you, and we're just trying to comply with balancing both fully utilize the staff and materials and the ed code.
Greer, please.
So, I guess, and it gets back to Dr. Evans' comment. I, I know that we, you know, we've talked a lot about this, the force account limits, and I know that that's something that you've been working with, with Phil on. So, I think what would be helpful would be, you know, sort of a, an update, you know, if this school district wants to move in a direction of insourcing more and more of this work, what do we need to do to lobby, you know, around, around moving force account limits at the state, with the state legislatures, that's number one? Where are our opportunities to interpret, you know, what's our interpretation of force account limits? Is it, is it a sort of a narrow interpretation that's restricting us, or can we, can we interpret the force account limits in a way that gives us more flexibility? That'd be number two. And then, and then number three would be if we've got success and actually, well, I guess number three would be, and it sounds like that's something you're doing, can we break projects up in a way that brings us under force account limits so that we're able to, you know, use our own staff more? And then fourth would be the capacity that we need to build.
Right. I, I think if I could just comment, one, we, I have been carrying on a conversation with both Bernie and Fackerman and Mark and Sandra because we understand the interest in, in making a movement there while we still comply with the law.
Right.
And we have talked amongst ourselves about, can you disaggregate work?
Right.
And I will tell you that we do it at, at our own risk because somebody will call us out. Those particular jobs on that second page, Mr. Greer, for example, if we took Scripps Ranch, the very first one, a hundred thousand, ninety-nine-thousand-dollar job, and suddenly we're doing about six of these jobs, they're all under seventeen, are all under the seventeen-thousand, twenty-one-thousand-dollar mark, someone would probably question us, "Why are you going back six times to the same worksite?" That's my only caution to you about disaggregating this kind of work.
Right. But it might be, it might be the kind of thing that, you know, strategically, we're actually trying to do to kind of push the legal argument, you know, maybe, maybe we want to, maybe we want to take on that challenge because we want to, we want to push back.
I'll certainly talk and work with both Bernie and Mark. Let me tell you that we are looking, let me give you a couple of examples where we are looking to bring work to our staff.
Yeah.
For example, there's this major push to install Promethean boards, the smart boards in the classrooms. I've already raised my hand, as Drew has, to say, "We want PPO to be trained to install those boards and to get their fair share." Let me give you a second example. You voted on tonight's synthetic turf fields, raised our hand. We want our landscapers to be able to know how to maintain those fields and how to get the appropriate equipment for cleaning those fields. So, there are those cases where we're trying to comply with the laws we know it today, looking for opportunities for our people as well. New technologies such as Promethean boards, new types of materials such as synthetic turf, so that they are capable and forward-thinking.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking I would ask, and certainly if you can provide this, is certainly the scope of these particular jobs. I don't mean to be so nitpicky, but I'm looking at Penn, I'm looking at Jones, and those schools are kind of similar in nature, and there's a huge difference in the cost. So, I, I just need to get a better feel for, because if they're charging us more and if they, you know, I know you're saying all of these are forced, but if they charge, if it's forced because, and it's really raising the, the cost up, you know, we just need to look at things. Right now, we're, and I know that in some of the items, we're getting in lower bids because people are willing to bid a little bit lower to, to keep themselves and us both afloat during this time, but we really need to be as, you know, as streamlined as possible with these, with these bids.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve this item? I got a motion, second please. Okay, please vote. Okay, thank you very much. That concludes all of the items on the I agenda. I'd like to thank all those people who stuck around for public testimony. We're going to go to our public participation now. We have some more magnet transportation. We have about five people, Andrea Aragosa, Melissa Salam, Penelope Nagel, Melissa Porter, and Jacqueline Ponicia. Okay, are any of you people here?
Yes.
Oh, come on, please come forward. Thank you for waiting.
Oh, we forgot to mention these, didn't we? So, I think we voted for these, didn't we?
Yeah, just record that. We voted in close. Thank you for waiting.
Yeah, thank you.
We were deciding whether or not to. We didn't want to be beaten down too much.
Oh.
And we care, so. My, I'm Melissa Salam, and my son is thriving at Spreakles Elementary School, a bilingual magnet, and we love our school and its multicultural community of families. We are seven-hundred-seventy-five kids strong, but could lose up to three-hundred-seventy kids next year if you cut the buses. We met first on this whole issue when John Evans came to UC High, and it really upset us to hear what was happening, so we decided we needed to work quickly, and we did everything he asked us to, to show our support. A small group of parents have been working hard, and with the school behind us, we've collected over five-hundred letters. We did a bus transportation survey of our own, and we got back two-hundred surveys within two days because we felt we were constantly being rushed to be able to provide more information to you guys. Interestingly enough, none of the parents who are leading this cause are bus, have bus riders. And a lot of us have kindergarteners, and I think that's why we feel we have a big stake in the school. We care very much about Spreakles, the teachers, the quality education we receive, and what magnets educations do for our community. And that's why even though I drive my kid to school each day and I even pay a babysitter when I'm working to do it, I'm here and leading, you know, five-hundred other families to show that it does matter whether you're a bus rider or not because we're all, we all work together. Thousands of kids are waiting to attend magnet schools and are waiting from calls from principals. We know that because I've spoken to people in the transportation magnet office, and they say, "We just can't even move forward. We have thousands of families waiting. They don't know what's going to happen next year because we don't have final decisions." You have thousands more families who are counting on you who attend the schools who don't even know what's going to happen to all of us next year. Parents must plan in advance to survive, to keep their jobs, and ensure their kids can get to school and have safe daycare after school. Please revote to keep buses and magnet schools strong. There are so many ways to improve the system, and I think everybody believes there's no reason to waste money. There's way too many important programs. Can I please finish?
She left last.
Um, I think it's important to revise the system for everybody's benefit and to keep as many programs alive. There is ways to fix it and not just cut it. I know you guys did a report, and so it shows that there's still bus rides needed for students for V program improvement and special ed. And we also know that now that you have the proper financial information, which obviously is critical, that the number of kids that will benefit from this program, and obviously it's estimated more like four million dollars instead of ten and a half, which is tremendous, is so much compared to the other programs and cuts that can be made. With countless items, line items, I just can't believe we can't find a way. Budget problems or not, magnet schools are critical to our society. We must promote diversity and prepare our kids for a global future. We wonder why we can't get, you know, educated workforces, why things are failing around us in our economy, and yet we don't want to make teaching kids our priority. Please prioritize and keep school first, keep money for teachers and students, magnet buses, magnet funding, music, principals. I've been here and listening to other people's, please, I agree, there are so many important things, but I think there are basic necessities that should not be touched. Smaller classes, gate, performing arts and sports. I can't even believe sports are even being threatened. It's such an incredible thing for what it does for our kids and their self-esteem. We shouldn't have to fight for basic necessities. There must be a better way. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Melissa Porter, and I have a kindergartner and a third grader attending Spreakles. I chose to send my kids to this school rather than our neighborhood school because of the Spanish language program and the good test scores. Knowledge of the Spanish language is so important for living in the state of California. I wish I had been given the opportunity to learn a second language when I was a small child because elementary school kids are language sponges. My kindergartner can roll his Rs like. Unfortunately, I, I took German in school, and I actually lived in Europe in junior high, and I went to a, an army military school, and they would not teach us German, while everybody else in Germany was bilingual. I met, and traveling through Europe, I met, you know, cobblers that were bilingual. It's just such an important, important skill to have. And the magnet program is so incredibly successful. It's been shown, why fix something that's not broken? Cutting the busing is just going to hurt the magnet program, I mean, possibly closing some of our schools, and it's just so short-sighted. The magnet programs just, they provide so much enrichment for the kids. I mean, the actual cost of the busing, as you mentioned, looks like it's not going to be quite as much as was originally, and it's pretty minimal in the big grand scheme of things. Has anyone looked into what the impact will be on the other schools if the busing is ended? You know, where are those kids going to go, and, and how is that going to affect all the other schools in the district? There has to be a way of funding these buses. I mean, through advertising on the outside of the buses, like a support, a supportive bus program, bonds, some kind of fee for service, donations, more efficient routes. The whole program, I mean, the whole thing really seems really short-sighted right now. It breaks my heart to maybe potentially have to send my kids to a different school. I really wanted to thank Mr. DeBeck. He, we had sent some emails, and he was one of the only, or he was the only board member that actually replied back to several of us, and just, I really appreciate that. And so, just the change in the busing is just going to create a, this total ripple effect of changing, you know, closing some schools, losing teacher positions, making class sizes bigger, it's just a huge snowball. And appreciate, appreciate the chance to talk. Can I read as a different person? She had to leave. Going to read her little, it's a very short thing.
Okay.
This is from Penelope Nagel, or Nagle.
Thank you.
It says, "I have a bachelor's in economics and MBA and have worked for one of the most profitable bank, profitable banks in the world for almost eight years. She was a former student of Spreakles and currently has a second grader there. It seems to, to her that we're playing a zero-sum game with our children's future, and we need to find the middle ground so everyone can win. With or without aid from the federal government, our budget crisis exists, and a need to redefine common practices is necessary, but not at the expense of important programs like magnet schools. I'm here to offer some alternative solutions to our current situation in hopes of saving the program while efficiently freeing up funds necessary to promote other important policies like classroom size." She has three things listed. A, having buses make fewer stops by requiring students to be picked up at their nearby school and then transported to the magnet school in a group instead of multiple pickup locations. It's a more efficient manner of transportation and would save time and money. If the program was eliminated, these parents would have to transport their child to that location independently, so why not use the same practice with respect to busing? Her second point is increasing the number of students required per bus from eight to ten. A proposal A would most likely have this effect as well and limit transportation costs. And her third point was have qualification standards for free transportation similar to the standards that are used to qualify children for free lunches. Those parents that can afford to pay should help fund this service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Jackie Pernicano, I am a parent at Kearney CTA, and I do have some handouts, so I'll just briefly go over instead of reading it. I was planning on reading it, but I'll just highlight this. Basically, it's regarding the magnet transportation funding, but it's regarding the program outside of the classroom and how it will impact so many other things. It's a very emotional thing for me, so I'm trying to get through this. As I said, I have two kids that attend CTA, and I really wanted to go over some, some basic things. We have forty-one percent of our students are bussed in at CTA. CTA is one of the four academies at Kearney. Of that, sixty-five percent of our kids are Title I, and a good portion of them are the students that are bussed in. So, we could potentially lose Title I funding because of that. We've done a great job bringing back the, the pride, I think, I would say, regarding athletics at Kearney. And I just want you all to bear with me here and maybe visualize something for me. Close your eyes if you want to, but picture a warm sunny day, the breeze is light, thermometer reads seventy-two degrees, the photographer's gathering. Players for their team photo, these players taking their place in uniform. Proud that they made the roster, looking to a great season. With newly hired coach, as the photographer's ready and all are in place, announcements made, will the following students please step down from the bleachers? One by one, the students are called and they're asked to come down, and those are the students that are magnet students that aren't going to make the team, not because they're not grade-eligible and they don't have the talent, it's because they're being asked to go back to the school they came from. The last point that I'll make regarding that is the impact that it will have on the CIF issues that we have. Every single one of those students that will be forced to go back to their home school will have to go through the CIF hardship case, and if students and their families don't understand that, they will probably sit out a year or have to go through that process. And my concern is over the summertime, if they're not certain what's happening, I don't know when the bus situation's going to get straightened out. Football starts in, in August. What happens with these students? You know, they start practicing, they think they're going to that school, and then there's no transportation, and that's my main concern. I do have attachments and a lot of data attached to what I have that I've collected from our school, and I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Georgina Orazio, Amy Bezno, Jacqueline Bacon from Florence, followed by Sandy Maxson
Good evening, everyone. I'm a teacher at Florence, and I'm here to ask the board to remove Florence Elementary from the list of schools in the share a principal proposal. Florence has an API score of eight-hundred-and-sixty-five, and it's, and for the last five consecutive years, it's been in the eight-hundreds. It didn't happen overnight. It is unlikely that the high performance could have been achieved and maintained without its present full-time principal. I'm not going to go into how- I'm not going to go into how we have more staff because we have mild to severe students and a lot of IEPs. I'm sure that Mr. Barrera will hear about it tomorrow. A part-time principal is a direct hit to our classroom and to our school, and our motto is to keep all of us away from the classroom. So I'm just coming to tell you that we're asking you for that and for you to look into it very carefully. Merging things seems nice on paper, very, very good, just put numbers together, but I think you have to reevaluate the situation at Florence. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Bacon McLish. I live at twenty-seven, twenty-nine Boundary Street. I'm the parent of two sons at Florence Elementary School. I am here to express my deep concern about the tentative decision to assign one principal to Florence Elementary and Bernie Elementary, which together have over six hundred students for the two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten school year, and I ask you to reconsider. Florence is a diverse Title I urban campus with students from many different countries, I think it was nineteen when I last heard, and many ethnic backgrounds with various home languages. Ms. Roscoe has told you about our academic achievement. We have special education services in mainstream classrooms, and we have three mild to severe special needs classes. We also have a wonderful part-time, primetime program and a CDC. We have earned the Title I Academic Achievement Award five years in a row, and we were one of two schools in our district to be nominated for a blue ribbon school. These accomplishments do not happen without an extremely strong principal, and our principal, Mary Estle, is indeed outstanding. My husband is a professor at SDSU, and he and I chose Florence rather than our neighborhood school because of Ms. Estle. We met her and heard her presentation to incoming families in two thousand and three, and we knew then that we would do all we could to have our sons attend her school. We have also recommended Florence to other parents, and many of them have come to the school and also identify Ms. Estle as a reason for enrolling their children. Every day, our decision is validated. Ms. Estle is on campus from very early in the morning until late in the afternoon, almost always meeting with students and parents or teachers when we see her. She is known for handling problems that arise in classrooms and other parts of the school personally and effectively so we can focus on learning. Now, you might wonder, how do I personally know how much she really is on campus? Let me tell you, I'm a parent of one child with special needs, I'm also a volunteer in the classroom, my husband is on our school site council, and he's also the president of the Florence Foundation, so really, we're on campus quite a bit. And Ms. Estle has an open-door policy, which we try not to abuse, but let me tell you, she has never turned us down when we have asked to meet with her. The children love and respect Ms. Estle. She, to be in her office is a treat that she, that the students brag about. She solves problems that arrive in behavior and academics daily. Even those of us who are very busy in our own lives don't know how she could possibly have time for all she does, and yet she does it. It is unthinkable to us that she would be asked to double the number of students she is responsible for, and I won't even get into the fact that we're a traditional year calendar, they're a year-round calendar, it's just logistically, it's, it overwhelms us. We recognize the difficulty of the economic situation, but this decision will not create just a hardship, it will destroy our school. Florence is something that we brag about, and we want you as a board to brag about it too. It is truly a success story. Please let us keep our principal. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Maxson, Mary McKenzie, Letitia, oh yeah, there you go, and Kimberly.
Good afternoon, everybody, evening now. Thank you for hanging in there. Letissa Mungia, Labor Rep with California School Employees Association, specifically representing the Operations Support Services Unit. For the record, the lady that spoke earlier on the asphalt issue, she is a president of the chapter. Her name is President F. Larkins with an S. She is a sitting president and has been for about a year and four months, just in case you wanted to know who that lady was. I want to let you know that I come to you on three different issues that I hope you listen to me on. I know you're really tired and weary. The first one is about the force account, and you've heard a lot about it tonight, but I also hear a lot of, I would ask that as a board and Dr. Greer as a superintendent, that you look at the lack, at the language with a more of an open approach to trying to protect the work of our workers that I represent. Historically, the district had been very good about analyzing the statutes that are applicable under the government code, and I have invoked the assistance of general counsel to give us a legal opinion, because I think that this is going to be an issue at the upcoming bargaining, because what I see happening is out of physical plant operations, that the interpretation of that language inhibits my members from doing the work that they've been hired to do for this district, which ties me into my second bullet, which is about the physical plant operations and the reorganization that all of you have supported through a lot of the actions that you've taken. As you know, two years ago or more, the district came to us under Dr. Carl Cohen and asked CSA to support working at the table to try to do some problem-solving, and we were given three guarantees at the table, and I'm going to remind you of what those are. We were told that, one, my chapter would not have any layoffs out of PPO. I was told that, number two, that it would be cost-neutral to this district, and number three, that it would make the operations of this district more efficient and effective. And I'm almost close to telling you that you have failed at those three. I don't have proof, and I've asked top management to give me a cost analysis of the implementation of the reorg, because what is happening, and I can project out about the impact that this is going to have, which is, and this is only speculation, I'm asking you for your help to get those numbers, which is that the circumstances are being laid in my departments to justify layoffs down the road. And you've already said to me that you're not going to lay off my people while we engage in this communication, so if you're going to not hold in, hold your part of the bargain, then we have a problem. And what I see, and this is the last and final thing I'll say to you, is that the effective and efficient operations of this district, when I refer to operations, I'm only speaking to operations, which is what I do day in and day out, is that I am really troubled by some of the comments that you've heard throughout tonight, right, which is the concern from the community, the parents, the people that are dealing with the students on a day in and day out. There's a certain degree of paralyzing effect among management that I don't understand. A willingness and unwillingness to take action. Willingness and unwillingness to take action. That is paralyzing the effective operations of all of the divisions that I represent. I don't know where it's coming from, I don't know where it's rooted in, but it's not cost savings, and it's really impacting the delivery of work of our members to the students. And I have to tell you, I don't know where it comes from, because I, we've thought about this, and we've thought about creating our own response to the reorg and bringing it to your table, so you can see what we're seeing. And so I have to tell you that I raise these concerns because I want to make sure that we work preemptively, and we've been at the table at all levels to try to ensure that this dialogue isn't where I'm blindsiding the board of Dr. Greer. That's not what it's about. It's about us rolling our sleeves up and really getting to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last, I think, but not least, I hope. Kimberly de Varsunca, four-four-seven, Los Angeles Place, nine-two-one-one-four. I bet you think I'm coming to talk about buses. I am, but I'm not. You might think I'm coming to talk about union issues. I am, but I'm not. I've been here in the past on a variety of specific issues, but today I'd like to speak to something larger. And first of all, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Evans and Mr. Barrera, for your remembering the community voice in your comments this evening, your discussions about transparency, the forum. I'm excited that you've, that you've approved that and that that will go forth, that you're looking more into the process. If I had understood the way the agenda was put out, I would have been able to speak to the agenda item when you talked about the budget analysis process, but because I find these documents really difficult to understand, me with my master's degree, it's really hard to know how to sign up for the appropriate time to speak. So I'm still here, and so are you, most of you, so thank you for that. It really comes down to being heard as a public citizen. The common thread that I see in all the recent proposed cuts in past issues that I've come to is they're set an announcement without any public notice or input. A survey went out to a select few parents who may or may not have had access to it or even known it existed. The board has had a number of meetings at times when most people cannot attend them that weren't public, sometimes when people might have been able to attend them had they known they were happening, and then has made drastic previously unannounced cuts that dramatically affect students and families throughout the district. I vote for my board members to represent me as a parent and as a citizen of San Diego, and I expect you to operate in a way that is transparent and always for the best of all the students who attend our schools. Not just my child, not just my students, every student in this district. The various proposed cuts, VAPA, Magnet Transportation, potentially OCIL programs, always target the least privileged, the unheard voices, so I'm here tonight to speak for those people. Some parents will be able to transport their children to Magnet schools, or take their kids to concerts, or Old Town, or pay for music classes, or whatever it is that you're proposed, proposing to cut today, or tomorrow, or next week, or next month. But the bulk of those who won't are the poorest, the ones who live in the most disadvantaged areas with the fewest option. These are, these are the parents who have sought out better options for their children only to have it pulled out from under them without even being notified that that might be considered. You talk about school choice, you talk about equal opportunity, but what are you doing to guarantee it? Thank you.
Okay. That was the last. Thank you very much, and we're going to recess for five minutes, and we convene upstairs for our debriefing. Thank all those that stayed to be in. Appreciate it.